Hello, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. Item number one and the only item on our special meeting is a public hearing, and the subject is to consider whether to authorize the formal submission and processing of a general plan amendment authorization for a change to the land use designation from low density to low to medium density, which would allow construction of four small lot, single-family homes where one single-family home currently exists. The commonly known address is nineteen-eight-twenty Homestead Road. And so do we have a staff report? I'm not seeing our city manager, and so let me just go directly to Director Fu of Community Development. Welcome, Director Fu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. We do have a presentation. John Martier, Senior Planner from our Department Planning Division will be presenting for you this evening. As Mayor had introduced the item for us, this item also had been back before you on April sixth with the initial hearing. At that time, the council voted for the applicant to come back to respond to some comments, and some of those comments include setbacks, shadow study, landscaping, as well as noticing two adjacent neighbors in the single-family area. With that, I will hand it off to John for a presentation. I believe the applicant is here as well. Thank you. John?
Thank you, Ben. Good evening. John Martier, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. Let me just share my screen, and we'll get the presentation started. Okay. All right. Well, good evening again. Again, this is General Plan Amendment Authorization, GPA Authorization, two thousand twenty-dash-zero-zero-one. It's the two thousand twenty-one first cycle application. As Director Fu had mentioned, that this was already in front of the council April sixth, and the motion that the council made was to come back with some revisions to the project itself, and I'll go over those revisions a little further along in the presentation. The first, as a reminder of what the GPA authorization process is and what the criteria for evaluation is as well. So again, these are proposals that are evaluated twice a year. Their value on these criteria, general plan goals, which include the start site architectural design, neighborhood compatibility, fiscal impacts, provisions for affordable housing, viable sustainability. Council's task with looking at the general plan amendments requested also included are the voluntary community amenities that are proposed by the applicant, which can include school resources, public facilities, open space, transportation. And then it discusses, we know, staff time and resources required. All this information was detailed in the staff report. So we're already in the process. Again, we haven't moved from the process at all since April sixth. We're still at the very beginning, which is where council has its initial meeting. It's gateway meeting rather to determine whether this application goes on to or is authorized to apply for the general plan amendment or is not authorized. So again, this was tabled to the, to this date, where the applicant had the thirty days to resubmit for the application. In fact, on May sixth of this year, they did resubmit, responded to council's comments, and staff had reviewed it and scheduled this meeting. So the next steps is really just the, no, general plan amendments are being adopted at this time. Remember, this is not, we're not deciding on a project. This technically per sequo is not a project. Again, it's just a gateway process. The projects authorized by the council to move forward will enter the formal development review process for project review and environmental analysis. Timeline typically first for days can run up to seven to nine months, maybe longer. Projects, again, may resubmit within three days with minor adjustments, which they had already done. So again, the subject for this is to consider whether to authorize a formal submission and processing of general plan amendment authorization for a change to land use designation from low density, one to five units an acre, to low, medium density, five to ten units an acre, which would allow construction of four small, single-family homes where one single-family home currently exists. Again, within those, within two of those four single-family homes, you'd have ADUs. So really quick, this is a coming outlier parcel of the city right next to the PG&E camp, sorry, corp yard, and pretty much surrounded on three sides by the city of Sunnyvale. Most of those residential zones around the city of Sunnyvale are single-family homes. At least on the south side of Homestead, most of those homes are, are single-family, single-story. The lot is about a half acre, at least close to a half acre in zone eight-one-four-three. I mean, that's an agricultural zone for single-family homes, and the minimum lot size would be about forty-three thousand square feet. And again, we discussed what the general plan request is. So at the council hearing on April sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the city council had the following request, that the applicant consider an emphasis on below-market rate aspect of the project, any voluntary community amenities related to BMR housing impact. Remember that the applicant originally proposed no, no community amenities at that time other than what was required for the ordinance in terms of below-market rate in lieu fees and any other street dedications and whatnot. Homes adjacent to single-family residents have to have a twelve-foot setback on second floor and a nine-foot setback on the first floor. This was in consideration for the single-family homes on the eastern side of the property in Sunnyvale. Perform a shadow study to analyze the impact of second stories on neighboring single-family homes, buffering, what type of buffering the applicant could do with landscaping to buffer the second floor from, at least along the east side from the single-family development in Sunnyvale, and to reasonably noticed neighbors in the single-family areas within the city of Sunnyvale. As part of the application process, the city did do a, prior to the April sixth meeting, did do a citywide postcard, but those postcards typically only go to Cupertino addresses. So because this is essentially surrounded by the city of Sunnyvale, the request from council was to better notify the neighbors. Although I do have to add that prior to the April sixth meeting, the applicant did do outreach to neighbors, I believe, within five hundred feet of the parcel. So I'll go through each of those points to see how and if the applicant has responded to those requests from council. So just to kind of, just before I go to those responses to the requests, just some visuals, just to see what, how visually it's changed. The photo on the left, the diagram on the left, rather, and the, and the, the photo on the right are the kind of the original and the revised respectively. One of the comments from council at the time was that the, the original drawing gave the misconception that this was in the middle of some kind of Blake Field, and you get it since this is part of a single-family neighborhood. So when the applicant reapplied in May sixth, they provided this visual on the right to show, okay, these are really what it looks like with the PG&E corp yard to the west and the single-family neighborhoods to the south and the east. And then even from the front out, front elevation along Homestead Boulevard, this is looking south on the front elevation. The top is what was originally shown to council on April sixth. The bottom is, is a modification that was applied to, which was resubmitted on May sixth. As you can see, the May sixth version on the bottom has a lot more landscape buffering along Homestead Road, and also shows to scale what, in relation to what the neighboring house to the project's east looks like in relation to the development. So the BMR community benefit, so the applicant has agreed to, to increase the BMR fee, the BMR lieu fee, that they would have to pay from eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents per square foot to thirty dollars a square foot, per square foot, for the, for the development, for the required BMR fees. One of the things that the city's next study had looked at with similar types of developments early on this year was what is the maximum the city could charge per square foot similar types of developments, and that was found to be thirty dollars and ten cents per square foot. So the applicant's proposing just slightly under what maximum that the, that our studies and feasibility analysis could, has shown that they could, that the city could charge. Second was increasing setbacks for homes adjacent to the single-family homes in the city of Sunnyvale. So this is the front elevation showing that, that the, that the homes along the east elevation, that along the east side of the development adjacent to the single-family homes do have first floor setback of nine and a half feet and a second floor setback of twelve feet as requested by council. Shadow study, there is a more detailed shadow study as part of the plan set that was attached here to the staff report. This is just showing the shadow at four P M. on June twenty-first. That was the most impactful, that would be the most impactful shadowing of the properties to the east, as you can see. If we look, it's, it's showing the topping south, directional south, that the single, that the shadow would, would cross just minimally over, over the property lines to the properties to the east of the development. Buffering and landscaping, the applicant had, had noted that they had increased the buffering along the frontage of Homestead Road, and that they would maintain, maintain as much as possible landscape, the existing landscaping that they believe would be sufficient to the buffer, the second story from the single-family homes to the east in the south. Notice neighbors in single-family areas within the city of Sunnyvale. Again, staff had noticed the neighbors within one thousand, within a one-thousand-foot radius of the, of the site late last month, that this would be a hearing agenda item. Let's see. The site plan has changed slightly. The original site plan had the, the larger homes in the front and the smaller homes in the back. This has been reversed, that the smaller homes are front and the rear homes in the back. Other than a few of the setbacks on the eastern side of the, of the development, not much has changed in the overall basic site planning of the, the development. Net fiscal impacts are the exact same as last time. Again, ninety-three-hundred net positive annual fiscal impact to the city's general fund, which is essentially a net increase of seventy-six-hundred dollars from the existing use on site. Affordable housing, we talked about the amended housing mitigation fees. Environment ability, we have to meet the city's green building ordinance, our score minimum fifty points, lead silver, or GPR certified minimum fifty points, lead silver, alternative reference, to be consistent with the city's green building ordinance. What was found approximately with the additional BMR fee from eighteen ninety-eight, eighteen dollars ninety-eight cents per square foot to thirty dollars a square, per square foot, that the difference between what they would pay, what they will be pay, would be, what they would pay had they not increased their BMR, the lieu fee, to what they will be paying if this gets approved, would be approximately ninety thousand dollars extra. And so what that will come out to is about six dollars and sixty-five cents per square foot. That includes the garage areas, maybe you can count those into the calculations as So this sequence does not apply to this because this is not defined as a project. The project-level environmental review will be conducted for projects that are authorized to move forward with applications for general plan amendments. And again, this is, goes through our public noticing. We had, staff had noticed property owners within a thousand feet from the project site. And that concludes my presentation.
Hey, thank you very much, John. Are there any questions from council before we bring it to members of the public? And I also did want to provide an opportunity for the applicant to say a few words if they so chose. John or Director Fu, are there any applicants that want to present on this item?
I believe the applicants are here, and they do have a presentation.
Okay. And how long do they need for the presentation?
I believe five to ten minutes.
Okay. So let's do this. And does the applicant agree with that, five to ten minutes, approximately? How long would you take? Is it closer to five?
Seven to eight minutes. Yeah.
I'm sorry, one more time?
We will wrap up in seven to eight minutes.
Eight minutes? Okay. And so video, you can set the timer at eight minutes. We'll have the applicant present at this point. I don't see any hands from council at this point, so we'll go ahead and take the applicant's presentation now. So welcome back.
Hi. How are you all?
Good.
This is Joseph Bellomo. We're the design architects. I'm here with Pratima Shaw, project architect. Thank you for your time. It's a pleasure to be designing another building in Santa Clara Valley. I've had the privilege of designing quite a few buildings in Santa Clara Valley, and am proud of this, this building. It's a great opportunity. I'm going to introduce Pratima Shaw, the project architect.
Good evening, respected council members, city officials, and residents of Cupertino. We Bellomo Architects, along with our clients Homestead Homes, are delighted to present a revised proposal for general plan amendment. We appreciated your review and valuable feedback on April sixth. Based on the comments by the city council, we have revised our proposal accordingly. During my presentation this evening, I will summarize our responses to the city council's comments. The city council's comment on April sixth included the following. First, on BMR rate aspect of the project, require additional setbacks on the east side of the property, perform a shadow study, and buffering with landscaping. So this next slide shows the aerial view of the proposed development on the property. The design proposal includes four residences, of which two residences having attached dwelling units or ADUs. We studied and evaluated multiple possible uses for this property as a commercial, mixed-use, multifamily residential, and realized that those uses are not feasible due to the, and compared, we are confident that the whole development, low-medium residential density is not feasible and comparable use for the property.
I'm sorry, it might help if you turn off your videos because your audio is coming out pretty choppy.
Okay. Stop video. Four residential in this structural driveway surrounded by private landscaped areas on three sides. As per one of the requirements by the city council, the first floor has on the east side of the property. Second floor, but it's, when I stop the video, the sharing stopped too, so I will start Are you able to see a second floor plan?
No, we still see the, we still see the image of the, the house from, from Homestead right now.
Hold on.
Through the mayor, I can share my screen, and then Pratima, let me know when you want me to switch.
I'll stop sharing.
We stop the share, and then John, go ahead and share your screen.
Can you all see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So you want, which, which?
We were on second floor plan, light number five, second floor plan.
Okay, there we go.
The second floor has set back of twelve feet on the east side of the property. Next, please. Shadow studies illustrate the impact of development in terms of sun and day light access to the surrounding context, including surrounding buildings. A detailed shadow study has been performed at different dates and time of the year, which assisted in understanding of casting of shadows. The drawing illustrates the shadow study performed on June twenty-first at ten A M., twelve noon, two P M., three P M., and four P M. It demonstrates that location and height of the proposed facades and roofs. Grease set from east side of the property has helped to minimize this impact. Next, please. Include buffering or landscaping. This comment is regarding privacy protection standards for single-family residential district to mitigate privacy impacts due to second-story window openings. On the east side of the property, which is abutting a single-family residential zone, there are five proposed operable windows and two obscure fixed glass walls. We are proposing a combination of three mitigation methods for this property. First method is planting trees. There are three existing trees on east side of the property, which will be protected and retained. There is a mature mulberry tree with a thirty-inch trunk diameter on the neighboring property. Three additional trees have been proposed on the east side at a location which will screen the proper second-story openings. Second method is increasing sill height of the window openings. The proposal, the proposal has three windows which have sill level more than five feet above the finished second floor. Third method is using obscure glass and non-operable windows. Two of the proposed openings have fixed, fixed white glass. The additional setback of nine feet on the first floor and twelve feet on the second floor with landscape and trees will create a buffer and provide privacy between major residential properties. Next, please. As per below-marketed mitigation program procedural manual, the mandated mitigation fee for this project is eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents a square foot. As per city council's suggestion, the applicant has revised the proposal and increased its payment of BMR fees to dollar thirty square foot, close to the maximum that would be justified by project packs as per study. Next, please. The community limits posed with the development are comparable and growth to the size of the development. The development proposes a land dedication of around three thousand square feet along Homestead Road. This is the prime real estate that is dedicated to the future easement for pedestrian vehicular circulation. There is no existing sidewalk with the property. Applicant proposes to develop a sidewalk, a landscape strip, street trees, street light benches, and stormwater management for the sidewalk. Usually, a sidewalk improvement is required with any development project. This is a unique situation where applicant is proposing sidewalk improvement as well as devoting land for the street and the sidewalk. This three thousand square foot of land dedication is a community benefit offered by the applicant in addition to the BMR fees. Also, the proposed development is not causing any negative net fiscal impact, on the contrary, generating revenue. Next. To conclude, we appreciate your review and opportunity to revise our design proposal. Next, please, John. We are pleased to propose a general plan amendment which is aligned to the city's vision for future development. We have responded to all the comments of the city council from the previous review. Once we receive general plan amendment authorization, we will develop this preliminary design to fulfill all the requirements of the city of Cupertino. We request your support and approval for this general plan amendment. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. And now I will bring it back.
This concludes my presentation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll bring it back to the city council now. I don't see any hands raised for clarifying questions of either of the presentations. And so at this point, I will, I do see hands raised now. And so Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Willie, brief clarifying questions, if you can, save your commentary and discussion until after we've heard from members of the public. Thank you. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, last time in the staff report, I can find the square footage of each unit and the ADU. This time I couldn't find it, and can you point me to where it is?
Sure. This, you know, admittedly, in the staff report, we gave a range of square footages, but the, the, the square footage per unit would be in the project plan set that was the attachment C. And let me give you the exact sheet number that would be, sorry, sheet number A eleven of attachment C.
Vice Mayor Chow, attachment D, page two, also have it listed for each residence, and it's broken down to each floor, plus garage, and the total square footage, and the existing square footage as well in the page-two attachment D as well, in addition to the plans.
Yeah, I really appreciate last time this information is in the staff report, because that's the first thing I want to know, how big is each unit? How big is the ADU? Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Our next questions come from Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, mine's also about the ADU and the square footage. If you could go back to the top view, I'm a little bit confused. Where, can you show us where the ADUs are located, top view? You just look, or just leave it? In the meantime, while you're doing that, if I can ask the city attorney a question. So I'm thinking that, you know, the standard R one policy is the square footage of the ADU and the square footage of the house together are limited by the allowed, is that correct? And does that change with the new ADU law?
I'm sorry, I, I, you kind of blipped out right on the question. Could you say that again?
I, I'm thinking that the current ADU requirements are that the ADU square footage plus the house square footage cannot exceed the allowed FAR. Is that correct?
And I would refer that question over to our planners, John. I mean, our, our ordinance is current with state law ADUs, so.
Yeah, if, if the zoning district does have an FAR limit, which is currently is our single-family zone, you can't limit the size of ADU under, that's eight hundred square feet or less. So if someone were to come in with, you know, how, let's say it's ten thousand square feet, the FAR, I'm just going to make, just for simple math purposes, you know, FAR is forty-five percent, and they come in with a fifty-three-hundred square foot and eight hundred square feet of that is an attached ADU, you know, that's, that's, that's allowed.
Okay. And so where are the ADUs on this? Because I wasn't spotting it.
Okay, can you, are you able to see my screen, Councilmember? Okay. So I just went to the plan six, I think that's the easiest one to just make larger. So the two residents in the back, and hopefully you can see my cursor, ADU is right here, kind of this L shape, so it's, it's lighter colored of the, of the first floor.
And so the total square footage, including the ADUs, does that comply with what is allowed for the site?
So this, this most likely would not be in R one zone, so we wouldn't have an FAR dedicated to this, this development. You know, what we would probably do once, if this gets approved to, for, for a general plan amendment application, is rezone this to a planned development, and during that process, we would, we could assign an FAR to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore with questions.
Hey, thank you. I have a question. It seemed like last time there were, I think, five parcels perhaps, and now it's, it's unclear to me what happened with the parcels. It seems almost as though they're postage stamp lots. So is, is there, is the intention to, to sell or, or rent these, these different units? That's my first question, and then I've got a couple more. That's my first question, and then I've got a couple more.
They are, you're right, they are postage stamped sized lots. In terms of the intention of the developer, I can only assume they would want to sell them, but that's probably a good question to ask them directly.
Okay, because if those are indeed the lots, when I'm looking at the plan set, it looks as though the ADU and the larger unit associated with it would be sold together. So I'd like to clarify that. Also, in this, so that's one, and then the second one is in the staff report, the front setback in the table, in your table one, has a range of zero to twenty feet for the first floor and a range of zero to twenty feet for the second floor, and I think it's a solid twenty. And I would just want to make sure that that's nailed down, that it's going to be twenty feet.
All right, let me, if you don't mind, can I share my screen really quick, just kind of explain the reason why we have that range of front setback, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, and let me know if you can't see that. So this is kind of a illustration of the parcels, right, different colors for the four different parcels.
And John, I don't think it's showing yet on the screen.
Oh, yes, yes, I apologize, I missed the stuff. Okay, is that better?
Yep.
And here we are. Okay, so per the definition in our zoning ordinance, we would consider lots three and parcels three and four a corner parcel, right? So the front setback would be located on the shortest side that fronts the street. So the front would be along Homestead roadside. So this is where we get the twenty feet for the front setback right here. Okay? For the rear parcels, they're not corner lots. So per the definition, the front side would be the shortest, it was basically the lot line that's along the right-of-way, wherever they'd be their access point, their main access point. So for parcel one and parcel two, the elevation that's facing the internal driveway would be considered the front elevation of the front lot line. And so on that, there would be no, there's no setback for that one. So hopefully that's somewhat clear. So for parcel three and four, here's the front, here's the rear. For parcels one and two, we would consider this the front, and then the rear would be these right here.
Okay.
I hope that's clear.
No, no, it is, but it looks like I'm looking at five parcels. You've got the main lot and then the four, and so we're looking at a tentative track map? For five or more, we're at a tentative track map?
Yes, because you have a common parcel, correct?
Okay, also, in, I'm getting to the page here, page two of the staff report, project location and surrounding uses, it says the zero point four-six acre project site, et cetera, is zoned A one dash forty-three or agricultural residential with a minimum lot size of forty-three thousand square feet. That's one acre, and so this is a half acre, basically. So I'm just a little confused because it's, how does this work that it's got a minimum lot size of one acre, but it's a point four-six acre lot? So is that, it doesn't sound like it was following our rules at some point.
Yeah, or, you know, I would probably have to go back in the history of the subdivision and whatnot, figure out why it was subdivided that way. Yeah, so essentially, what you probably had was a was a non-conforming lot.
Okay, and did they, they probably, we probably mean four, three, five, six, oh, square feet, not in the forty-three thousand, to be the full acre? I'm going to assume it's supposed to be a full acre. Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. We will now go to members of the public with any commentary. We have two hands raised, Jennifer Griffin and Lisa Warren, keeping cognizant of time, we're at six thirty-four right now. We would greatly appreciate it if you could contain your comments substantially less than three minutes, but I will not curtail that. And again, if you have your hand raised by the end of our first public comment, I will call on you, reserving my right to adjust the amount of time available. Jennifer Griffin, welcome. And Jennifer, you may be getting when you're ready. Let's move on to Lisa Warren, I'm not hearing Jennifer. Okay, so at this point, Lisa, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I have a personal and citywide concern about privacy screening. So I just, there's a letter from neighbors to the southeast that are concerned about their privacy on two stories looking into their backyard. I know there's going to be plantings. I didn't catch, I'm sorry, what trees they are, but I know that the trees on the city's website, or excuse me, list of approved screening trees are often not appropriate, because they're too large when they're mature and actually going to be screened. So sorry, I just ran in here. So if it's possible, or I request that, I think it's the Waters who sent the letter, that they have a chance to give input on what the screening will be so that they don't have some forty-foot canopy, sixty-foot canopy tree growing over into their backyard, dropping messy stuff and hitting gutters on the new construction. So in my experience, landscape architects will just go through and pick trees out of the list the city gives them as approved screening trees, and they're not appropriate for where they're going, but nobody, very few people are aware of that, and you end up with a disaster. So please, please offer those people the opportunity to have input. And I'm also curious, when someone builds something like this, and you have two-story homes very close together within their own property, they're actually creating different parcels, so is there privacy screening required in between the two-story homes? Or is that not coming into play because it's not an existing home and a R one, blah, blah, blah? That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Jennifer, you may begin. And perhaps there are technical issues. It's possible you might need to reset your device, Jennifer, we're not getting any audio. So I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to a council at this point. I would be open to entertaining a motion for the purposes of beginning our deliberation. Would anyone like to bring a motion?
I would like to motion to approve the, sorry, I don't have the language. General plan authorization.
Okay, I'll provide the language and you can make the motion, so.
I have it. To authorize the project described in the general plan amendment authorization application, GPA A U T H twenty twenty twenty-two-two, twenty twenty oh oh one, to proceed to apply for the requested general plan amendments. If authorized, do I read the rest? Adopt a resolution number of the city council of the city of Cupertino authorizing a prospective development proposal described in the nineteen two eighty-nine, one nine two eight zero Homestead Road Project General Plan Amendment Authorization Application Number GPA A U T H twenty twenty oh oh one, to proceed with the general plan amendment application.
Yeah, I will provide the resolution number, that is two one dash zero three zero. Okay, is there a second to Vice Mayor Chow's motion? We'll go by hands. Councilmember Way?
I'll second that.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow moves, and Councilmember Way seconds. We'll go with deliberation at this time. Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised, followed by Councilmember Moore. A time check, we're at six forty, so if we reach, let's say, a minute or two, I will go ahead and table that discussion until we can reach a time in our regular agenda where we can place this for further discussion in the regular meeting. Okay, Vice Mayor Chow.
So I like the modifications made. I know there are other issues, but this is not a project approval. This is just going forward to have GPA coming back to us for approval. When it comes back, I hope there is sufficient detail so that, because P, my concern with P zoning is there is not a lot of detail, and in case this project could qualify for any streamlining, we need to have sufficient objective standards built in the general plan amendment that specify the setbacks and everything for this particular, this is not an R one zoning. So a lot of R one zoning restrictions do not apply, so we need special details for this lot. I hope to see those when it comes back.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Our next comments are from Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. For the interest of time, I am going to not speak this time.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, you have the floor.
Yeah, since we're limited on time, I'll just make my comments that I feel should be considered by staff and the applicant. Whenever you're putting a project in an existing neighborhood, I think it really needs to address the existing requirements of that neighborhood. And so when I see this project and I see the front twenty-foot setback, sounds good, that I believe is the correct first-floor setback. On the second floor, I believe it's supposed to be an additional ten for R one, and that's the area that it's in. You know, I don't really care for the concept of that we're going to change the zoning to a P so that there's no rule. When you're putting something in a residential area that's going to impact the neighbors, I think the default should clearly be made that it needs to fit with it. Now, if the neighbors were to say, hey, we like it, and it doesn't conform, that would be great, but I don't think it's fair to the neighbors. Okay, so I think that is one important point for both the applicant and the staff. The next one is the ADUs, you know, we don't have time to really look at all the parking, but realistically, we don't want the parking to be spilling over into the existing neighborhood. And with four primary houses, I mean, everybody's going to have a garage with two cars in it, but, you know, most families come and go really frequently, and so they don't necessarily want to use the garage. So if there's two per house and we all use our driveways, that's another eight parking spaces, and then when we add two ADUs that do not have garages, again, two cars per is going to be another four cars that somehow should be accommodated. I don't think I saw that much outdoor parking, because there's no parking in the driveway directly connected to the garages. So I'm a little bit concerned about sufficient parking, and when this comes back to us.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, we're going to pick up with you when we bring this back at the regular meeting. I'm going to suggest under postponements and orders of the day that we bring this back after the consent calendar. It's a little bit into six forty-four now, I'm going to start our regular meeting on time, and so we'll just table this until the regular meeting, thank you very much. And again, we'll start with Councilmember Willie, and yeah, we have effectively a little bit of a break until our regular meeting commences. Thanks. Okay, I didn't say it would be a long break, so we're at six forty-five now, and is starting for the Cupertino City Council. Today is June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Yeah.
Councilmember Willie? Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Sorry, I was muted, here.
Okay, great.
And I'm here as well.
Mayor Paul, okay.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our first item on our regular agenda falls under ceremonial matters and presentations. Our city council very much values the necessity of bringing forth inventory of affordable housing and helping put forward effective solutions to the housing crisis. We have obviously experienced some homeless unhoused issues in Cupertino during the course of the last year, and so we're very happy to bring forth with approximately a half-hour allocation on item one on our June fifteenth meeting, a presentation from Destination Homes Supportive Housing and Innovation Fund. Madam City Manager, would you like to present the speaker from Destination Home?
Sure, I'm happy to introduce Ms. Jennifer Loving, and are you going to do the initial start there, Jennifer? And go ahead.
Hey, hi, City Manager and Mayor and City Council, and of course, my dog just started barking, so I think that is very on-brand for how these meetings go, so I apologize.
Oh, good, we're dog lovers here.
Okay, good. My colleague Ray Bramson is with us, if it's okay, he can share a brief deck that we have that explains our work and hopefully how we can work with you in the city of Cupertino. Ray, the next slide, please, once it's full screen, it'd be great. Thank you. So Destination Home was created on purpose about twelve years ago through a multi-jurisdictional process to have a one convening entity for strategies to end and prevent homelessness. And so in the last five years, the work has been really underway around permanently housing people, providing some temporary housing for people, and also preventing families and individuals from becoming homeless. And we do that through a community plan to end homelessness. Our first community plan was in twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, a five-year plan, and during that time, we housed fourteen thousand people permanently. When I say we, I mean the continuum of service providers working together with local jurisdictions and our federal partners like Housing and Urban Development and our Santa Clara County Housing Authority. We've prevented homelessness for over thirteen hundred families, and since twenty fifteen, I've leveraged over a billion dollars in government, corporate, and foundation dollars. Most notably was the passage of Measure A in twenty sixteen, nine hundred and fifty million dollar housing bond, but we've also launched a private fund to be a companion to that with seed funding from Cisco and Apple. The next slide, please. So Measure A, I know that you're, they're all fairly familiar with Measure A, was the housing bond that passed in twenty sixteen, nine hundred and fifty million dollars with the goal of creating forty-eight hundred new homes by the year twenty twenty-six. The good news is that there's already been almost three thousand units created, thirty-four housing projects, including the Veranda, spread out over seven cities, encumbering a little over five hundred million dollars. Those units, so we have about half the time left for this bond, and so there's a real appetite to continue to be building Measure A projects. Next slide. To advance those goals, because as we all know, right, there's not a single source of money that can kind of be enough to solve all of our problems, and so while Measure A is incredible, it doesn't fill all of the holes. It requires tax credits, it requires other funding, local subsidies, and we launched something called the Supportive Housing and Innovation Fund in twenty eighteen. I had mentioned Cisco and Apple helped seed this fund, and we use it to leverage permanent public financing with really early flexible philanthropic capital. We've helped to buy parcels, we've helped to fill pre-development gaps or just provide capacity-building money for the developers groups like Charities Housing or First Community Housing. When you're building the deepest level of affordability, like zero to thirty percent AMI, right, they need some flexible capital to be able to do that. And then we also do things like explore innovative strategies to decrease the time to build housing. We've partnered with the city of San Jose over the last few years. We funded a full-time planner, a senior planner in their planning department, and that person just took the Measure A transaction. And that person just took the Measure A uh transactions. And we were able to shorten the the time of uh the pipeline, the planning pipeline by about twenty-five percent. I think I'll turn it over to Ray for the for the other slides.
Thanks, Jen. Uh good evening, Mayor, Council, Ray Bramson, Destination Home. As Jen mentioned, and I know uh primary interest to council this evening is where and how can we use private philanthropic capital to create new affordable housing opportunities? Uh Destination Home Through Our Fund has awarded over forty million dollars in loans and grants to support uh almost two thousand new units of supportive and extremely low-income housing at twenty sites throughout Santa Clara County. Um we've also used the philanthropic money that we have to create access to even more capital. So last year, um with Facebook and Lisk, we launched the Community Housing Fund, which is another hundred and fifty million dollars. And really, this really fast flexible capital that can be used to acquire sites, to um get developments going and then tap into those other sources of government funding like County Measure A. Uh Jen mentioned, we did fund a dedicated uh position at the City of San Jose, a planning position. So we're trying to add capacity to our government partners as well. Uh seven projects were fully entitled through that expedited process and we decreased time by twenty percent. And that's, you know, private entity giving flexible money to a government partner to increase the speed of development for our nonprofit housing development partners. Um and we're 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 really all about that. So we're working with local, small, uh and medium-sized nonprofit developers. We've awarded six uh six grants totaling two point two million dollars to expand the number of units that these developers can take on to hire project managers. And just recently, um as we came here a few months ago and have the community plan unanimously endorsed by your council. We're also looking at how we can more deeply partner with cities that are all in on the goals of the Community Plan to End Homelessness. So we provided partner grants to Morgan Hill and to Mountain View because they wanted to develop their own local city implementation plans with goals that supported not only ending homelessness for their city, but advancing the needs, um whether it's interim solutions or long-term housing um in each community. So we're trying to do everything we can to support with the resources that we have. And we're um we're uh very grateful to work with your uh engaged housing staff and your city manager. And we'd be happy to look at other opportunities and see how we can partner in Cupertino in future projects to come. With that, we're happy to open up for questions.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any questions from City Council at this point? You know, I'll I'll start off with a question. So there's a fairly strong appetite within our community to locate um places where we can be um having affordable housing projects. And so um with respect to the interfacing from the outset. Uh if we were interested in partnering partnering with Destination Home. Is there anything specific that you'd like us to keep in mind as we're going about trying to identify these locations? Are there uh particular aspects like access to transit or other types of um uh other types of factors that make a particular location better than others?
You know, I I I mean, I I'll say what I know you already know, Mayor, is true for Cupertino. Uh space and land is limited. So um in a lot of these smaller cities, we're ha- we'd we'd be happy to look at any site or location that you can identify. Um ideally, the proximity to amenities, um being close to transit, being close to resources is preferred. Um that's that's certainly what we wanna do, but we're, um if you have sites that you wanna take a deeper look at, that you think would be um a good match for a certain housing um or interim solution, we we are happy to work with you and kind of dive in deeper. I I think more than anything, we what we need is the the opportunity to um to find places where we can do work.
Absolutely. And and so your expectation in terms of optimal outcomes is, I take it to be, you know, a- at least in the conversation, um if not really right at the table, in the middle of the discussion from the outset of where we're looking for a particular um for for particular spaces. As well as certainly when we bring something to a council agenda. Would that be accurate or or should we hold off a little bit before we we approach Destination Home?
Uh we'd be happy to engage early on in the conversation. I I mean, we're looking for, you know, our end goal, we're trying to create more extremely low-income housing. And we're trying to create supportive housing for our most vulnerable members. But those are the, those are the two points, those are our North Stars and what we're focused on and really what our funds can be used for. So as lo- as long as we share those goals, we're happy to get in as early as possible and see what other partners we can bring to the table. We've got, you know, I mean, the County Office of Supportive Housing has been amazing to work with and kind of a leader in this space. Um but we also have uh Preston Prince is the new executive director of the Santa Clara Housing Authority. Uh Jen is the board chair of that housing authority as well. So there's uh I think there's a lot of community um interest and work and wanting to work work together. So we're we're happy to get, come to the table early.
Excellent. And um, oh, yes.
If I might uh offer, the way it's worked in some other cities is they have a a parcel that, you know, you own. Not sure what could be done with it. Uh, you know, do some like looking around at at how, what could maybe be built on that site. And then, you know, there's the county money, uh uh really does, they contribute a lot of money towards these projects. And and the private money that we have can go and support the developers in getting going. And so it really makes for a a a optimal sort of environment right now with the real, for us, and Ray said it. But really, what we're really interested in is in what Measure A is interested in is uh primarily zero to thirty percent area median income. And why that is so important is not only for people that are experiencing homelessness, but seniors, our elders on fixed income. Uh anybody with a disable, on disability or any sort of like s- uh federal uh uh fixed income. These are the the folks that are really, as you know, having the worst time here, right? And are are paying sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety percent of their income towards rent. And so we build these beautiful projects, you know, and then uh we're able to resolve the suffering for for the people that are really the most marginalized in our community.
And what would you say the the extent of the pr- problem is right now? Because in addition to the factors that you named, you are also looking at a very unusual year. We're looking at rent moratoriums that are most likely to be lifted in the reasonably near future. And so uh when we're talking about the number of units that are needed throughout our region in Santa Clara County. What are we looking at? What what is the scope of this um problem from a um from an absolute perspective? If we're trying to look at the number of units that would need to be created in these zero to thirty percent AMI uh in supportive housing spaces, now what are we looking at prospectively, you know, based upon what you see out there?
I think Jen was probably gonna answer, but it looks like she just froze in the in the midst. So I'm sure she'll be back in a second. I mean, there's tremendous need, obviously, right now in our community and in our region. Uh we have, you know, ten thousand households homeless on any uh given night. We have sixty-five thousand households plus countywide that are extremely low income that were one financial emergency away from homelessness. And with the pandemic that has just come through um and eviction moratoria is set to expire. We know a lot of these people are going to uh be pushed to the brink. So I mean, the need is tremendous. We're trying to do a lot of things. We we're launching, we have a, we have a community-wide uh homelessness prevention system in place where we're providing direct financial assistance through the Federal Emergency Rescue Act funds. So there's a lot of work that's going uh going on right now. But this is definitely uh one of the most desperate times I think we've seen and we've uh faced as a region. And uh there's gonna be a lot, a lot of work to do.
Uh, thank you very much. Um so let me go on to Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow. Questions at this point? Councilmember Willie, you have the floor.
Yeah, uh Ron and Jennifer, thank you so much for uh bringing this uh to us, to the details so that we can can better understand. Um, yeah, it it's not a, you know, it we we all see how much homelessness is is out there, uh, you know, over the last couple of years. And and I do think uh the community is very interested in in trying to help. So so I do really like the uh the terminology, you know, partnering. Yeah, yeah, let's partner, let's see what we can do. Let's, you know, over a year, two years. So that being said, the kind of the questions that I would ask is like, I would start with the uh the seed money that you said you're getting some from Cisco and some from Apple. Well, yeah, Apple, Cupertino, terrific. But my que- and then you uh later mentioned that uh Facebook had uh made uh some contribution. More or less, what I was wondering, with so many tech companies in the valley. Um, you know, I mean, Google, well, they've got their project downtown, but there are so many tech companies. Are are you able to get them to also contribute? I mean, when these tech companies are growing and bringing in more uh uh people that uh are gonna need housing. That kind of displaces uh people and aggravates the problem. So uh what are you able to do to to get more companies to contribute? Or can you?
Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember. It's a good question. Um, you know, as you, as you mentioned. You know, we've been very fortunate in uh organizations like corporations like Cisco and Apple really stepping up and providing a lot of philanthropic capital to get us going. Um, we're seeing other, we're seeing a a wider acknowledgement, at least in in my career. Um, right now that there is a responsibility of a lot of these bigger corporations towards housing. So we see corporations not just ta- putting philanthropic dollars out, but also making impact investments into revolving loan funds for housing. Um, Google has made a major commitment over the next ten years and um and is donating parcels of land, as is Facebook and Apple. Uh, do we need more? Absolutely. Uh, we, I think we need every, every homelessness and this affordable housing crisis impacts everyone. And it's not one entity organization's job or responsibility to solve it. And at the same time, everyone needs to be involved and pitch in. So I think um our focus has been to create opportunity, show that we can have measurable success with the supportive housing system that we have locally. And and Destination's home, Destination Home's job is to promote that success to these corporations and to show them, you know, you can be a part of this change. So always more work to do. I see more people pitching in than I have in the past, so that's, gives me hope.
Great, it sounds good. So I'll just leave it on on the comment that um yeah, if if somehow we can come up with, you know, um ways to partner. Um whether it's um, you know, getting out a map and looking at it or setting up a regular um uh meeting, you know, quarterly or something so that we can try and and move that football down the field. And so with that, thank you for all your efforts and uh keep it up and uh let us know what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have questions from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, you have the floor.
Hi, uh welcome. So have have you spoken to, presented at the uh our Housing Commission?
Uh, we have spoken to your Housing Commission when we were bringing the Community Plan forward. So um we brought forward the Community Plan to End Homelessness and had a conversation with your uh with your, with your Housing Commission at that point. We we haven't spoken to them since, since that was maybe six or eight months ago.
Oh, so that might be your first place to look at maybe different sites and to explore different options. I know that our Housing Commissioners are they really want to help identify sites, even sites that the city are not, don't own. And they want to see if there's any po- potential of purchasing also. So um I I think we should notify them to watch this presentation today. And then maybe in the future, you guys can uh talk to them. Yeah, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have questions from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, you have the floor.
Okay, um, hi, Ray. I'm I'm looking at the supportive housing map um online. And I think this is yours. Okay, so it's very simple definitions, uh because we're using the term supportive housing. Uh I'm, I clicked on Curtner Studios. Um and by the way, this is a great little interactive map where you can click on all the little, all the projects and you can see what um phase they're in, completed construction or pre-construction. Um funded by Measure A or not. So I'm looking at Curtner Studios. And if you could help me out, I'm seeing a hundred and seventy-nine units. And it says forty are supportive housing, seventy-one are rapid rehousing, and sixty-seven are other affordable. And um I don't actually know what what the difference is between those.
Yeah, a lot of terms, a lot of terms, Councilmembers, certainly. Um we, you know, unfortunately, there's a fair amount of jargon in our industry, but uh so goes. So supportive housing, uh when we talk about permanent supportive housing. Uh, we're talking about housing for an individual or family with a disability. Um who has been homeless at some point in their lives, was exiting homelessness. So uh pre-standard definition, the disabilities range widely, as do the populations. We have families where the head of household has a disability, but the children and the partner mi- might not. We have senior citizens where, you know, they, their age has led to a disabled state and they're frail and vulnerable. We have sick folks. So there's uh supportive housing serves a wide range, but it's that individual with the disability. And it's coupled, because they have that disability, with a how, with a rental subsidy because they're not gonna be able to work full-time because of the disability, they're not supposed to get a rental subsidy. And there are services on-site to meet whatever their needs are, depending on the population. That's, that's permanent supportive housing. Rapid rehousing is more traditionally for families and individuals who have run into kind of the buzzsaw of financial hardship in our community and ended up on the streets. But they have the ability to work full-time. They're probably, most likely are employed full-time but are just at a very low income level and are having, haven't been able to locate housing because, you know, first, last, and the security deposit here is out of most people's reaches. And when you, you know, when you have a financial emergency. So rapid rehousing is an affordable housing unit that is deed restricted, so the rent doesn't go up on them. It stays at, set at a certain level. But they also have a short-term subsidy, typically two years or less, which is providing them help as they're getting back on their feet and getting their lives um together. So that's rapid rehousing. And then other affordable is just affordable housing, so deed restricted. So the rent is set at a certain income level, whether it's extremely low income at thirty percent or very low income at fifty percent or low income at eighty percent. But it has a government subsidy to keep the rents at um at a lower level. And that's, you know, lots of, so many people in our community need uh deed-restricted affordable housing right now, as you know.
Okay, uh thank you. And um so I was taking notes and you you leverage public funds to buy parcels. So let let's say maybe Cupertino wants to um contribute a certain amount of funds and we've identified a property in in the city. Um is that, so we would, we would partner with you on purpose? And then what happens next? Because we've got to get to the building of the structure.
Right, so we would come in early with you and partner. And whether we're using, you know, we're we're working with our our partners at Lisk and the Community Housing Fund. Or Destination Home is doing it ourselves. We find a developer um to, you know, the working with Cupertino, we'd find a developer to develop on that site. We'd get them going with what's called pre-development funding, so money to create all the architecture and do the environmental studies and all of that early work. And then we'd work towards construction and permanent financing. And the developer would work towards that. But that's a combination of finding local subsidies from County Measure A, as we mentioned, or a city, if Cupertino had money to contribute, to applying for tax credits, so from the state. And then looking at other state financing sources and then moving the project forward. So we come in early in the pro- project. We probably take a little bit more risk because all of that isn't lined up yet. But we we can help them get in that direction. And we work, we try and work with good, strong developers with a history of affordable housing development. So we have some confidence that they'll be able to get through the process to build out the site.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much. Councilmember Way, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just want to be very briefly thanked Ray and Jennifer to bring your knowledge and passion to Cupertino. Um, we are a city, really, um, we are for affordable housing. So I am very passionate about in near future, we can work with you um to uh make something happen in Cupertino. And I receive your newsletter and I sometimes go to your webinar. I know how complicated it is to do affordable housing. So I just have one question. Um with affordable, affordable housing, hundred percent affordable housing project. What's the timeline that timelines that you're usually looking at?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's kind of a sad response, council member, and thank you for um, thank you for your support. We really appreciate it. Uh, you know, I'd say in general in this community, from the time you buy the piece of land to the time someone can move into their housing is typically three to five years. But when you ha- run into things like, uh, you know, you run into, sometimes cities can make it harder or easier to get development approved. So the entitlement process can slow things down. And then the other side is, you know, all that complicated financing that I was talking about um earlier with Councilmember Moore, that that financing is getting harder and harder to get. It's more and more competitive. So it can be harder to actually get the funds needed to build the building. But what we're seeing right now is about three to five years.
So would you advise Cupertino if we would really like to develop some affordable housing and do it as soon as we can? And identify sites, um, you know, as early as we can?
Yes, council member, that would be my advice. Great. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Wei, and welcome back, Jennifer. Thank you, Ray. We'll go over to, uh, I I see your hand is raised, Councilmember Moore. We'll go to members of the public before we bring them back to uh people. We have uh two hands raised. The first one is identified by uh last four digits of a phone number, caller oh seven four one. And our second hand raise is from Jennifer Griffin, and the third one is from call-in user two, which is the identifier on Zoom. Caller ending oh seven four one, I will allow you to talk. And uh for the benefit of the public, you will have uh until the end of the first speaker to raise your hand, and if you do so, I will call on you. All right, uh, caller oh seven four one, I believe you'll need to dial star six to unmute yourself. So once again, that's the caller dialing in with last four digits oh seven four one. Uh, you have been permitted to talk. You'll need to dial star six to.
I just did, Darcy. Okay, this is Jennifer, and I'm on both of them. I just sent you an email. It's time to go back to city council chambers. Uh, I am tired of Zoom. I think it's keeping us from talking at all. Yes, okay, um. I, you know, I tried, okay, you guys are having audio problems, the website, you guys are having problems. It's choppy on my phone and it's choppy on the computer. So anyway, yes, I'm glad you had the presentation about the affordable housing. I am on my telephone. I'm also on two tablets right now. So it's time to go back to city council chambers. Sorry if I sound cranky, but I am. Uh, yes, we need to have big discussions about affordable housing in the city. Um, I have a lot to say about the study session, but I wasn't able to talk. I hope that you guys uh bring that back because, um, anyway, I do, Darcy, I do want to speak in oral communications, uh, and Kirsten knows that. Yes, um, we, I I have questions about supportive housing. We have a project that possibly may be going in in the um, one of the restaurants uh down by two eighty and Highway nine. Uh, we need to make sure that if we're doing supportive housing, that there are facilities adjacent to help these people. I I'm very, very concerned that we may be plopping people who have a lot of needs into places where there is no support for them. Uh, that's my only comment on this. I think that, yes, God bless you for trying to house people. It is something we need to try to do. But remember, Ag News years ago was sold. It was the place where people could get help. It was sold and it became a sun campus. Now there's housing on it. Where do we have facilities like Ag News? How do we treat and provide supportive housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And uh just to make a quick note, our plan, I believe, is to reopen in August live. Okay, so our next speaker is call-in user two guest, and call-in user two, um, you'll also need to dial star six if you're on a phone.
Um, dear mayor and councilmembers, I very appreciate it. It let us talk. And um I was in an event today and got hurt badly and almost can be killed and not just all the financial thing related to it. This is very big stress, I understand, um, for this play structure in the back. And we rebuilt it per code, I think.
It's not oral communications, so I'm gonna go ahead and mute you. You can stay uh online. However, this is about the supportive housing item on item number one. We are not yet at oral communications.
Oh, okay.
Um, our next speaker is Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Neil. And Neil is our last speaker as well.
Hi, thank you, mayor. Uh, this is Neil. I am the Sheriff Cupertino for all. I wanted to thank Ray and Jennifer for coming today and also, if possible, be able to just ask a really, um, well, I don't know how quick it is, but a question that I think would be really helpful um for all of us, whether staff, council, or community members. If we were to identify a site and partner with Destination Home and other organizations as well, what are some of the ways that we could actually make the process easier for you beyond site identification, such as reducing costs, streamlining, et cetera?
That's a great question. And I, Mayor, uh, oh, I'm so sorry, my internet just completely shut down in the middle of my talking, so I apologize so much. You know, I think this, if the city identified a parcel and then uh was, had the will to do it, right, then that's huge. That is like half, if not more than half the battle, right? Money is is, we can find money, but it's the political will to do it. So if if the community was able to coalesce around a location, we could have as many different conversations as we needed to with the community members around what supportive housing is, how services are provided on site, what that looks like, right? So we can, we can definitely do that alongside this process, but that is uh the number one way. Because really, the the obstacles that we face the most is is uh fear or 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 uh a lack of will to just to create housing for really what I like to think of as just the most vulnerable people that live in our community.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Neil, for the question. And um just to uh apprise everyone and remind everyone, when you have uh the floor and you have the time, you have the floor. And so feel free to treat it the same way as council does to ask questions, and thank you, Jennifer, for for the answer there. Um, I'll bring it back to council at this point. We did wrap in some comments with regard to our questions. Um, I want to be cognizant of our time. Um, we are at a little bit over the half-hour mark, but if there are any wrap-up comments uh from council, I'll go ahead and make mine. Um, I would say stay tuned. I think that we are having a very strong appetite for your mission in the city of Cupertino. And I I think that uh there should be opportunities in the in the relatively near future. So hopefully, we can continue down the path that we've been able to successfully tread upon in this last year. And thank you very much for your efforts in order to uh make sure that the unhoused in our city in this past year during the pandemic have a path to to housing through your supportive housing systems and all. Um, any other comments with regard to rapid comments before we move on to item number two? So um I don't see any other hands raised from council at this point. And so I thank Jennifer as well as Ray. Thank you for coming out here. And again, we look forward to our partnerships and be hopefully near midterm and long-term future.
Thank you so much.
You're absolutely welcome. Um, so at this point, we are now at postponements and orders of the day. We had the special uh study session uh with regard, or I I I should say, the special meeting with regard to a public hearing on a general plan amendment authorization. And so I would like to ask that we move that item uh and continue it to the um to to the end of uh our consent calendar tonight. May I have a motion to that effect? Would uh anyone like to move? Vice Mayor Chow, are you?
Don't move.
Okay, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that. So uh this is a motion to continue our special meeting item to until um after our consent calendar is done. Uh, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And uh I do have a report out from closed sessions. However, um, I will note, uh, Madam City Attorney, I did make report outs at the end of the closed sessions that I think you're referencing, so is it necessary to make another report out at this time?
It's not necessary. It's just what this city has been doing in practice.
But we didn't make the report outs at the end of the sessions previously.
Yes, yes, you don't need to do it again.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you very much. Um, so now we are at oral communications. And so this portion of the meeting is for people who have any commentary that uh is for a subject matter that is not on the agenda. And so uh once again, I'll go ahead and um call upon any hands that are raised uh at the end of our, by the end of our first speaker. Right now, I have a call-in user two, Peggy Griffin, Gilbert Wong, JR Fruin, Richard Lowenthal, uh, call-in Connie Cunningham, Jean Baudrillard, Neil Parker Clintick, and Lisa Sines. So call-in user two, I will uh allow you to talk. You'll need to uh hit star six on your phone, and welcome back.
Thank you. Dear mayor and councilmembers, I very appreciate you guys um let us talk. And um and I just mentioned a little bit earlier, and I was in an event today, and I got hurt bad, pretty bad. I could get myself killed. And then not talking about all the financial consequences, and as you can see, I, um, we are in a very big stress. And not just the all the family issues, but I mean, doesn't work. You let the kids to even come, because the pay structure in the back. And as you know, we actually uh did a rebuild and put put a code requirement. And uh from bottom to foundation all the way to roof and uh built the wall in. And the facade actually was the, was confused uh issue. And we actually, because tried to uh put a symbolic permit to solve that, to solve that confusing in the future. And actually, several package for cer- cer- third party was, they say the last one was okay. But they said there's a little a core glitch, something like that. But I said, remember, that's a separate issue. So there's all this, um, all these things involved. And I, and I, I know your council in the city actually was had all this uh in the cons- in the consideration. Actually, was um a ma- a made this happen and can um have a symbolic permit and uh and a base uh define and and also keep the structure. And I know somehow um a change back and forth again. I mean, I, we don't blame anybody, because that's part of the uh, you know, uh, nature, whatever thing happens, it's just like, whatever happened in the city as well. But we still plead here because all the all the stuff I mentioned before, and I know is you guys um was uh had a concern before. So it is reasonable. So let's all move on. And um, let's uh let us have the the um symbolic permit and so don't have any future confusing. And the um abated the punitive um of the price and keep the the place structure shit thing in the back. And I wish everyone, um, you know, uh, best uh for the city and also, um, and everyone moves on. And um, you may have contact information, and feel free to talk to me. Um, I, you know, and whenever, whatever person I use, we should talk to, make this move forward. Because was at one point, no longer was that way, but you know, back again. So um, again, very appreciate it, and we plead you guys. Um, so we can all move on.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff. I would like to thank uh the council, the Housing Subcommittee, and the staff for their tremendous work getting the word out for the housing survey. I found out that there have been already uh over five hundred participants. That's pretty impressive at a time when communication is very difficult. So I I want to applaud you for your your efforts. I'd like to encourage all residents to take the survey. Whether you agree or disagree with specific items, take the survey and put your comments in at the end. And to the council, I would like to ask you to uh figure out a way to, in the current survey, there are sample areas where you're asking residents whether or not, um, what density they want or they think is appropriate. I would like you to somehow either come up with a uh an add-on survey or post on your website a way where we can submit ideas for areas. Everybody knows their own little community, and there might be a little bubble here or a little bubble there that might be prime for uh additional density. Let people submit their ideas, get kind of keep it open-ended. You can suggest your ideas, but also let us come up with some new ideas. Anyway, thank you for your efforts. I applaud you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Gilbert.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Darcy Paul, the Honorable City Council, uh, Madam, uh, City Manager Deb Fang, and Madam City Attorney Heather Minor. My name is Gilbert Wong, uh, former Cupertino mayor and Cupertino foothill dance community college trustee, and I'm here representing uh myself. Cupertino is a great place to live, work, and play. And most importantly, people uh love Cupertino because of our way of life, our wonderful schools, and especially our wonderful staff. It's really sad to say goodbye to our city manager and our city attorney. Deb Fang has uh been doing a wonderful job. Uh, she's been here for two years. Really has been a strong icon, not only for the city council that has appointed her, but also to our city staff. We have a strong, lean, but very hard-working um city staff that Deb has been uh leading. She thinks outside the box, coming from NASA as as the chief executive officer over there. That's nobody that's, you know, naturally that we have from the city. Uh, she really adapted very well. And she brought new ideas to both the city council and staff and really uh helped transition us in a transition period uh that we have. I really wish her the best. Uh, she has um been here when we had the open house for the uh Apple Park. Uh, she brought in new ideas, uh, working with staff to bring the uh library extension uh room to nutrition that will open at the end of um the year. And um you can see how she really motivated our city staff to move forward. And um usually when I say goodbye to city manager or city attorney, we usually have a separate uh ceremony where we have accolades that the community can say uh goodbye. But if it meant for me to say it during order communication, I want to say that. For our city attorney, Heather Minor, um, I didn't really have an opportunity to serve with her, but I saw a lot of your hard work during uh city council meetings. I know that elected officials are not easy to work with, but your job is to make sure that you keep us city council members and uh staff out of legal trouble. And I have seen your professionalism, and I wish that our, that wish you and your contract agency um the best as your contract uh ends. There are many people who wanted to be here tonight to wish uh farewell to two exceptional ladies. Especially Deb is our first uh woman to serve as our city manager. And I look forward to working with our new interim city manager and our new city attorney, which will be um held during the public hearing part, and really looking forward to the uh transition. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Gilbert. Our next speaker is JR Fruin. Welcome, JR.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. Uh, my comments tonight are directed to our outgoing city manager, Deb Fang. Madam City Manager, I I simply want to express my profound thanks to you for all your efforts for our city in the two years that you've been at the helm here. You've led us through some truly challenging times, and I'm not just talking about the unique dangers of COVID nineteen. I'm talking about confronting all of the divisions in our our city. On today in particular, when Cupertino raised the pride flag over Civic Center Plaza for the third time, I'm reminded of your indispensable role in making the first such ceremony happen in two thousand nineteen. Between that and our new rainbow crosswalk near Cupertino High School, a whole generation of LGBTQ kids will know that their community supports them. And they'll have you to thank for your part in making that happen. Your roots run deep here, so from a son of Cupertino to you as a daughter of Cupertino, I'm grateful for your service to our community. And I hope that this will not be the last that we see of you here. Thank you.
As a council, you will do the same and give her the proper recognition she deserves. Best wishes, Jennifer Sharon.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'll go ahead and call on Jennifer Griffin. Uh, again, Jennifer, uh, you have the floor, if you're able to unmute.
Hello, Darcy, can you hear me? God, I'm sorry, I spent thirty years in IT and I have never seen anything like this before. Uh, you know, I am so tired of Zoom. Yeah, let's, let's get rid of it now. I really feel like we have compromised a lot of things. Uh, so I, yeah, the sooner we get back off of it, I, I'm really tired of having IT adventures every single time we go on. Yeah, Deb and, um, our intrepid Heather, you guys rank among the very best. And I have seen a lot since nineteen ninety-five in here. You two have persevered through times that would have tried the souls of saints. Um, so thank you. I will tell you too, it has been no fun ride with the S, having to constantly worry about Senator Weiner and his horrible housing bills. We've got SB nine and SB ten which are going to rip the heart out of our state. And I am frankly, we need to have an investigation into who is funding these bills. If you look at who are the supporters, it's in the actual text for SB nine and ten. You have charities that are pumping millions of dollars into these bills. And no one is looking at it. Are they trying to take control of our state? Why do these people get to dictate what happens in our state? I have had no chance to vote on any of these bills. Um, why is Senator Weiner thinking that he gets to control the state? Frankly, I'm really tired of it. I'm tired of Zoom and I'm tired of these housing bills. We have to constantly fight to keep anything going on in California. We don't get to vote on anything. We have a whole subculture that are seizing control of our state. And, and I, yeah, if I seem cross and tired, yeah, we had to fight not only through pandemic, but we had to fight with Aberg, HCD. Uh, I, I have no faith in any of our these phony facilities. Um, I, you know, I, I'm really frankly, if it's good enough for the goose, let's put it on the ballot. If you're gonna split suburbia into four to ten lots, let's put it on the ballot. If it passes, great, but no more of this subterfuge and making people feel that they shouldn't live in their homes. Yeah, let's get rid of it like Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we are done with oral communications. We are on to reports by council and staff. Item number two is a set of brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. Um, and again, I asked our council to, uh, try to, uh, keep within a minute. Um, and I don't have any hands raised at this point, um, but I'll go ahead and wait a moment. I have council member Willie, councilor Willie on the floor.
Yeah, so although I have another topic, I wanna start with, uh, thank you, uh, Deb. Um, when we were in the position of needing a city manager, my top priority was a city manager that's gonna be, uh, engaging the community. A common theme that I heard over and over again is that the city is not listening. It is so important for the city council and the city manager and city staff to be engaging and listening to the residents. And you did that when you came in, you raised the bar, and will continue to raise that bar. So thank you so much for that. Second topic, due to time constraints tonight, I'll just say that the, uh, 5G concerns of residents and, uh, coming up with a community team approach. I met with Verizon for a second time, they took the message back to management and came back with a positive note, and we will be moving forward. Next week, I'll give you more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So I'll share screen. Um, first, I, uh, thanks, thanks. Oh, what happened? My screen blanked. I, um, on my screen blanked. Okay. So I think we all said our comments to Deb the week after, uh, she, uh, sent a resignation letter. And I spoke to her at lens this morning after the rainbow racing. And I really, really appreciate her. And for now, I'd like to comment about, okay. So she supported when I started the coffee talk, because I'm a, I love cappuccino, so we started to go to coffee shops. Started the coffee talk series. because I'm a, I love cappuccino, so we started to go to coffee shops, started the coffee talk series. And I'd like to announce that this year I have appointed an intern, Sarah Went, who is on the youth activity board. She is putting together a Cooper Talk series that we will start in Ju, in July. And we will start first with a Cooper Talk business to talk about reopening plans with small business holder, um, owners. And then we also hope to have a Cooper Talk teens and seniors so that we can connect teens and seniors on having a multi-generational talk together. And I'd like to also mention that here is the Cupertino Housing Survey. You just need to Google Cupertino Housing Survey. You'll find this page. Click on the link. You will see the housing survey. And in the housing survey, I'd like to point out this question that many residents have commented about. This asks how high the building is. However, it points, it only lists in six sites. Uh, seven, sorry, bad math. Seven sites. These are samples. There are, these are not all the sites that's available. And we are actually looking into all the possible sites that looks, for example, here are a list of possible sites actually have identified, and there are more. So we are hoping that residents can help us identify more potential sites to consider for maybe a follow-up survey if we have the council's support. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Wei.
All right. Um, thank you, Mayor Paul. Very briefly, um, I attended a couple of webinars. One is the MT, MTC's Plan Area 2050 webinar. It is asking for residents' input. I think Vice Mayor Chow has advocated for that, um, um, somewhere in our book. So it's important that we put input to it. And another exciting thing is, um, well, it's looking in the future is the VTA's Bicycle Superhighway Virtual Ride. It was a very interesting webinar, and our very own Roger Lee actually was on staff to, um, be, um, on, on the webinar too. So another one is, um, I attended the virtual, uh, virtual ribbon cutting ceremony for the Rancho San Antonio Detention Basin. It may not be very well-known, but this basin will protect about 2,200 hu, uh, housing units from flood, and also is, uh, will be recreational and very environmental friendly. So it's a very, uh, good achievement. So that's the, um, brief report. Thanks, Mayor Paul.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. We'll move on to the city manager update on emergency response efforts. That is item three. Madam City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will try to keep it as short as possible, but there are a lot of changes given what today is, June 15th, uh, which is the state lifting the blueprint for a safer economy and its related restrictions. Uh, we'll have this all posted to the website, et cetera. What this means for the public is in restaurants and other indoor spaces, there are no face coverings required for vaccinated individuals. There are no capacity restrictions or social distancing requirements. Face coverings are at the discretion of the individual, except for unvaccinated people. This will be on a self-reported basis. Some exceptions where face coverings will still be required are healthcare facilities and offices, cooling centers, mass transit, homeless shelters, and emerg, other emergency shelters. Vaccinations, as we near the upper limits of vaccination rates in the county, some mass vaccination sites will be winding down, such as Levi's Stadium. You may have seen a press release about that. The focus will now be put on those census tracts necessary for more focused vaccination efforts. Testing. There is a reduction in testing sites. There will be no more testing in Cupertino at the senior center. Uh, the last one at the beginning of June, I believe it was, was the last time, and they will start focusing testing, um, at some of the, kind of consolidate them. Testing will continue at Walgreens on Bolinger and El Camino Health on Valco Parkway. Appointments can be made at www.sccfreetest, sorry, yes, freetest.org for all remaining sites around the county, should you want to go get tested. In Cupertino, there are 937 cases by zip code and 940 cases by city of COVID-19. The last time I reported, it was 929 by zip code and 940 by city. For those that are, those individuals 12 years of age and older, the lowest vaccination area, the lowest vaccinated rate area in Cupertino is 76%. Still very high, but most areas in Cupertino are 87 to 95% vaccinated. We're doing super, super well. Um, so a little bit about the workplace that could affect council and staff. Cal OSHA, which dictates the guidelines for the workplace, will be considering changes this Thursday on June 17th for an effective date of June 28th. For fully vaccinated people, it's very similar to, uh, guidance for the public. No face coverings will be required. Employer will provide face coverings for those that want or need them. Non-vaccinated employees will self, self-attest by wearing a mask. Some exceptions for not wearing a face covering for non-vaccinated people are, if the person is alone, has a medical or mental health consideration, is eating or drinking, is hearing impaired. Will be no social distancing requirement at work. Um, the governor also may enact an executive order to shorten the implementation time for the new Cal OSHA guidelines from June 28th to June 17th. Um, in case people haven't noticed, it's getting warm. And, uh, there's going to be, um, extreme heat predicted for both Wednesday, tomorrow, and Thursday. So due to that expected, um, heat event, the library, library will be open as a cooling center both days from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. Um, it's possible that they could extend the hours of operation, but we do not have any information on that at that time. And this concludes my last city manager report.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, you have served admirably and well, and we thank you. Um, we were very, um, we were very surprised by the announcement a few weeks ago, three weeks ago, uh, yet tomorrow. Um, but I, I think that with your, um, with your good stewardship these last couple of years, you leave Cupertino in a better shape than, um, you know, you found it. And so, uh, I, I just want to express that appreciation. Uh, of course, I'm not going to speak to speculation. I'm not going to speak to, you know, people always have that entitlement to, you know, speak, and, you know, it's, it's a free country. You know, we put our systemic ideals into that. But I will say that, um, on behalf of the council, uh, we have really enjoyed working with you, and we do hope that you keep in touch. Um, and, uh, just to have an FYI to the public, um, we have an open invite to our, uh, city manager if she wants to have a gathering, uh, next week, because we're opening it up literally today, tomorrow, and Thursday. Um, that is, uh, purely up to Deb, and I'm sure that we'd all be happy to, uh, attend and, uh, you know, wish her, uh, the very best in her future endeavors. So.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your remarks. Just a very short comment to both the council and members of the public and city staff. Um, the comments were a little overwhelming today, and so, uh, I appreciate everybody's feeling about that. And I served the best that I could in the last two years. Um, I think, uh, one of the individuals from the public really hit it on the head that, um, nobody signs up to lead through a pandemic. So with the cooperation and collaboration of council, city staff, and myself, we really did a bang-up job, I think. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Deb. Um, okay, so we have a, uh, meeting to finish out here. We are on item number four, the report on committee assignments. Um, I'll lead us off, um, just very succinctly, uh, the library JPA didn't meet. Um, VTA Board didn't meet as well. Um, and there was a, a meeting of the County Unhoused Task Force. So that was the final meeting of the scheduled set of meetings on the unhoused task force. But of course, as we saw from the study session of being of our regular meeting today, um, the, the work most definitively continues, and we will, um, probably reconvene on a regional basis uh, in the relatively near future. Councilmember Willie, you now have the floor for the reports on committee assignments.
Yes, so we had our, uh, monthly Silicon Valley Clean Energy, uh, meeting. Um, just a, a quick reminder that last year was a banner year for getting additional contracts for renewable energy for clean, for Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Essentially, 4% of the, uh, needed energy, uh, came in in last year's contract. But this week's, uh, or this month's meeting was really focused on the hot spells that we're having and the, uh, fire danger that exists. And so they really impressed on us that the high demand period from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM at night is when we really do, we all need to be conserving because that's what's causing the high, uh, fire, uh, condition where, uh, we've got. So with that, try to conserve, do what you can, scale back, every little bit helps. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. We next have Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, you have the floor.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor Paul, and perhaps this should have been mentioned during, um, I guess it would be item two, but, uh, it was great to see everybody out, uh, for, uh, the raising of the flag for, um, Pride Month, and, uh, happy pride to everyone. Uh, for, uh, I'm on the Environmental Quality Policy Committee, um, for the state, uh, Cal Cities, and it has about 50 different council members from across the state on it. Uh, we met on June 3rd, and we discussed, um, SB 533 and had a support position. Uh, that's for wildfire mitigation plans, and we discussed and supported a proposed microgrid policy. And, uh, I volunteered, and I'm waiting to hear back, I volunteered to be on a subcommittee between the, um, the state's housing, uh, policy committee and the environmental quality policy committee to, uh, look into ACA 7. And there was, at this time, there's, uh, not been a position taken on it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow, you have the floor.
Hello. Hi. On the 10th of June, I attended the City's Association with Legislative Action Committee meeting, and they voted to oppose SB nine, uh, with two upstanding. Um, the rest of voted the yes for, for, for opposing SB nine. And then also opposed 1401, which would, uh, uh, force, take our parking, parking, uh, restriction. And then we have a City's Association Board meeting. And, uh, our city's own Legislative Review Committee will meet this Friday at 11 o'clock. This is the end of the first half of the legislative season, so we should expect a summary from our lobbyists. And then on the 14th of June, which is yesterday, we had another housing subcommittee meeting to see updates from the, um, and as mentioned, there are more than 500 responses. About 50% of them are, um, anonymous. 50% have registered. And, uh, we are, we will continue to push. We will meet again on the 28th, 8th of June to get updates to see if we might extend the deadline so that we can get more response. And then we also discussed the height, the site selection issue that I mentioned, uh, earlier. And on the 3rd of June, John Willie and I actually had another roundtable. We received some comments from roundtable, uh, members. I have passed those comments to the city staff, such as, based on the city agenda, uh, it's hard to find it from the city email notification. And then there are often two links to the open and closed session for the city council meeting for some members of the community. That's confusing. Hopefully, it will be open soon in August. Then, but we, the city will, uh, consider hybrid meeting. Um, then everyone can find the best way to attend the council meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. I don't have any hands raised for, uh, committee report outs, uh, for council on item number four. And so we will move on to, uh, the consent calendar. The consent calendar tonight is items number five through 26. Uh, I have been in receipt of two, uh, requests from the public over email to pull item number 22. I will also pull item number 24, and I will also pull item number 26. Is there any, uh, desire from council to pull any other items outside of 22, 24, and 26? Uh, Councilmember Moore.
Mayor, if I may, could you clarify when the, um, hearing on the general plan amendment application discontinued to? Was that before consent or after, or was tabled to?
Um, I believe I was part of postponement.
It was, it was postponed just after the consent items.
After consent, okay.
Correct.
So yes, that's upon conclusion of the consent. Um, Councilmember Moore, did you want to pull any other items from the consent calendar other than 22, 24, and 26?
Uh, item 12. So I'm interested in 12, 22, 24, and 26 also.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to pull any items other than 12, 22, 24, and 26?
I hope to pull 25.
Okay.
Yeah, the new city attorney.
I, I think that's, um, yeah, I was gonna make a very brief, but, okay, so now we have items 12, 22, 24, 25, and 26 pulled from consent calendar. Uh, Councilmember Wei, would you like to pull anything from consent?
No, I'm not pulling anything, but this question's for Kirsten, um, number nine. Um, is the minutes changed, or do we need to pull it to change it, to update?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Wei. I was just waiting to, after council was, was speaking. But yes, um, there is a correction for item nine, um, an amendment for item nine, the June 1 minutes. And I also have an email from a member of the public to pull item 11.
Okay, so now we have, um, items number, uh, number 11, 12, 22, 24, 25, and 26 pulled from the consent calendar.
And nine.
Um, you're pulling nine, Madam City Clerk, to indicate the materials that you've updated, is that correct?
Yeah, isn't that your preference to the process, is just to pull it?
Uh, okay, we can.
Do I have an amendment?
I, I know that we have the items that are updated, and you have provided those updates to the public, correct?
Yes, they are posted on the website locations.
Okay.
Redline versions.
So there was not a request from Councilmember Wei to pull number nine. It was just a clarification. And so let's, let's keep that off for now. Um, we'll keep that on consent, uh, because the, uh, material is available publicly. Uh, I will go to our member of the public with a hand raised. Peggy Griffin, you have a hand raised. Did you want to pull anything other than the items that are identified for being pulled off consent calendar?
No, I, uh, Kirsten caught that with item number 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so may I have a motion for items? And I'll read them off, um, by number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, uh, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, uh, 20, 21, 23, uh, on consent cal, calendar.
Slow move.
Okay, Councilmember Willie moves. Uh, Councilmember Wei, would you like to second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, would you please, um, conduct the roll call vote for the enumerated items on consent?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Question carries unanimously.
Okay, so our first item is item number 11. Um, that's a consideration of confirming the proposed rescission of emergency order number 20-01, requiring face coverings for the public to slow the spread of COVID-19. Madam City Manager, actually, let me ask first, who requested to pull this item, Madam City Clerk from the public?
That was Peggy Griffin, Mayor.
Okay, um, so let's, um, let's do this, let's go to the member of the public and, uh, ask, uh, the, the purpose for the polling so that we can make, uh, efficient use of our time. Uh, Peggy, if you could raise your hand, um, and go ahead and, and call upon you. All right, uh, Peggy, uh, please, I, I'm not setting a timer on you. I, I just was wondering.
I'll be quick. I'll be quick. I, I pulled this because I'd like it to be clear to the public what the city policy is on face coverings. We have different, the state, we've got different dates. If, if rescinding this order means what to the ordinary citizen?
Great.
And as of what date? Thank you.
That's a, that's a wonderful question. Madam City Manager, I know that we have a press release coming out, um, first thing in the morning tomorrow on this to clarify. But Madam City Manager, did you want to encapsulate a response, uh, to Peggy with regard to, what is the difference between what the city of Cupertino is doing now vis-à-vis the state or the federal government?
Sure. At the beginning of our emergency, if, if, I'm sure, uh, most of council will recall and members of the public that Cupertino was one of the first cities, well, it was the first city to agendize an emergency order to do a face covering indoors. And at that time, it was mostly when indoors you were going into retail. And it was right at the beginning of the pandemic. The effort here now is to, technical term, peel that back. The effort here now is to, technical term, peel that back so that the city lines up with the state and CDC and county guidance, current guidance. So as of today, essentially for vaccinated people, there will be discretion on when and where you use a face covering. And for non-vaccinated people, they wear a face covering in certain situations. So, and I did list some exceptions during my report. So some exceptions for everybody are, if you're going to a healthcare facility, hospital office, you'll be wearing a face covering, cooling centers, mask transit, homeless shelters, and emergency shelters of all kinds. That's the difference.
Right, thank you, Madam City Manager. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Um, I'd like to take this to mention a public comment I received, that the public cautions that we should not have masks shaming. Some people simply cannot take a vaccine because of autoimmune disease or pregnancy, or they plan to take, to be pregnant. So they might not be able to vaccinate at this time. And we should be respective of their individual situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Would anyone at this time like to move item eleven as recommended?
Uh, move, second.
Moves, Councilmember Way seconds. I don't see further hands raised for commentary on this item. So we will go ahead and conduct the roll call vote. Madam City Clerk.
All right, was that Councilmember Willie that moved?
That was Vice Mayor Chow that moved, and.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our next item is item twelve, and I believe that this was Councilmember Moore who pulled the item from consent calendar. Councilmember Moore, did you want to speak to the item briefly before we bring it to staff?
Um, yes, okay, so this is the approval of a contract for the Math Olympiad education program for August first, twenty twenty-one, to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And my question is, what budget unit number is this under? I believe it's under five eighty dash sixty-two dash six one three. And I'm curious, if I have that right, I just want to understand how that budgeted amount was put in our current budget, because this is, this is going to fall into the current budget, which we're looking at approving, because it's starting in August. And so I think it falls under youth teen recreation, and I'm wondering if that could be clarified.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, and so I'll turn it over to our staff. I do see that our Director of Parks and Recreation, Recreation and Community Services, as it's called, has her camera on, and Director McGreeney, welcome. Did you want to speak to item number twelve?
Sure, thank you. So that G L account is the correct account. I would defer to Zach and Christina with finance about the budget question specifically.
Okay, welcome, Director Alfaro and Zach. Did either one of you want to speak to one of those questions?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Paul, City Councilmembers, Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. As we'll discuss a little bit later on the budget adoption item, the city in, put into place a zero-based budget a few years ago, where departments are required to account for line items in their budget. And so in the Parks and Rec budget, there isn't a specific contractor tied to this, but there should be an expense line under contracts related to Math Olympiad.
Okay, Director Alfaro, Councilmember Moore, you still have your hand raised?
Yes, so if I look under youth teen recreation for contract services, so when we contract with different, I guess, instructors and their companies, those end up in this budget under, if it's for the youth and teen program, it would end up in this budget under contract services. And so am I seeing a one-year amount in this budget? Because this is a, this is a three-year contract period.
It should only be for the current year. Council adopts the budget on a one fiscal year basis.
Okay, okay, and so what happens? So this contract services amount is nine hundred and eighteen thousand. So what happens when, say, the programs expand and you end up with, say, two million dollars worth of contract services? Does that need to come to council to increase the contract services amount?
So if they're expanding programs or offering new programs, we ask the departments to bring that to council, to make sure council is aware of the expanded programs and can approve the funding related to them.
Okay, and I'm a little bit confused, because I thought that with the two hundred thousand dollars limit before something needed to go out to bid, I'm a little confused, because this is, this is a multi-year contract, and it's, and it's over two hundred thousand, even if you, you know, divide it out by year. So I almost wonder if this needs to be handled a little bit differently, because it's, it's actually a course that's through Parks and Rec. So I'm not sure how we, how we are actually getting around the two hundred thousand no-bid limit.
Sure, so we specifically addressed that in the staff report. The direction per the municipal code requires that service contracts undergo a formal bidding process. But there is an exemption for professional services. And I don't know if Heather would like to speak to that more, but this would be considered a professional service of that nature.
That's correct.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, did you have any other further questions at this time?
Sure, yes, no, it was my understanding that two hundred thousand dollars was the limit even for professional services. So I want, I'll need some follow-up about that amount. And then this was an ongoing question that I've had about with the contracts that are allowed to be entered into. And I know that some of the surrounding cities have like a fifty thousand dollar limit. And now it sounds like it's, it's, can be much higher than that. And so I'd like to learn a bit more about that and have it come back to council.
Okay, are you moving that this be continued, this item number twelve be continued to a future date? Councilmember Moore?
If we move to a future date, our next meeting is in July?
It's on July twentieth, correct. And I note that the contract date starts on August first.
Right, and that's, that's the problem, and unless we're going to have a, can it be, can, do we have anything earlier than that? Because we've canceled meetings, and I would, I wish we, you know, had a, had a regular meeting that was sooner than at the end of July.
Well, I suppose we could try to, if we happen to have a special meeting between now and then, put it on to that. But we don't have a date certain at this time. So let me go on to Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Way and Councilmember Willie, who have their hands raised as well. Vice Mayor Chow, you have the floor.
This Math Olympiad class has been in Cupertino for many years. My college-age son, who is turning twenty this year, he took the class back when he was in fifth grade. And this is an extremely popular class, that the teacher, where it doesn't make sense to put this out to bid, because it's just a, it's very hard to find a good teacher like Mr. G. And I assume many kids are already lined up to for his class. Usually, it's very hard to get a seat. And then I don't know if we postponed, would that affect the sign-up deadline? Yeah, this is a more than ten years partnership between city and the contractor, so.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Willie.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. Yeah, I want to follow, add on to Vice Mayor's comment. This Math Olympiad is a very reputable and very popular, not just popular, it really is good for our kids. And actually, if you read it carefully, we are, we are making money out of it. The money we charge to our kids actually exceeds the money we are paying the contractors. And, you know, even with a lot of things going out for bid, there is, I think, maybe a city attorney can help me with this. We don't have to necessarily go with the lowest bid. We go with quality. And this is a proven quality program. So I don't see anything we need to postpone it, because kids are lining up, signing up, the park and recreation needs to get the booklets out. And I just think this program is very reputable. Even if we go out to bid, I don't think we will find another comparable program. So I would not be wanting to postpone this item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
So, yeah, my comment would be that, you know, since I was unaware of this prior to, you know, this agenda item, and yet it's such a high-dollar item, you know, is it really being well-understood by the entire community that this class exists? And this is an opportunity for us to know and the, the community that is watching or participating to hear. So I would toss out, you know, that maybe we go ahead and approve, say, a hundred and fifty thousand, and then bring it back so that we can better understand, if not an agenda item, a study session. I mean, you know, close to a million dollars of our taxpayer money. I also really like that Councilman Way says the money coming in is more than it's truly costing us. That would be really good for us to know, because maybe we should be advocating for a couple other, or even higher enrollment of this particular class. So I'll toss that out, that somehow keep it on our, our future meeting.
Okay, well, I do appreciate the sentiment with regard to examining the contracts. I, you know, I actually find it pretty compelling, Vice Mayor Chow's comments with regard to the perspective of a parent that has had a student, a child, go through this. I just, I didn't really have any clarity or firsthand transparency. You know, as a student, I actually was really into Math Olympiad. My older brother, seven years older than me, was around high school age. That's when I actually started breaking into these American High School Mathematic Examination books. So it's of interest and fascination. I think, you know, for the sake of the continuity, it does make sense to go ahead and pass this. This is just my own perspective here, but I think that the points raised are really good ones. I mean, if you have such a significant contract, you know, if we're not going out to bid, I think it would be good to give the public a little bit more clarity, because this is a very significant amount. And it does affect other types of contracts that we're looking at as well. So I think not just the optics, but also the notice to the public. Perhaps we have, you know, a special study session, maybe three or four months out, just to, you know, let people know and get them ready for the fact that, you know, A, it is something that does exceed, you know, some certain contractual thresholds. But at the same time, I think we should take into factor the track, the proven track record of success and the impact upon the community. So at this point, the balance of factors for me goes to supporting that we support the staff recommendation. But I do, I appreciate and respect each and every one of my colleagues' comments here. I see Councilmember Moore still has her, has her hand up again, and Vice Mayor Chow still has her hand up. So Councilmember Moore, having opened this up, will turn the floor over to you as well.
Okay, so first, I want it to be understood that this is, this is not brought up about what the quality of this, this program whatsoever. It's about the process with which it's being approved. And in the, in the staff report, it references section three point twenty-two of the Municipal Code. And the purpose of that chapter is enacted to set forth policy to establish efficient procedures for the purchase of supplies, materials, equipment, and services at the lowest possible cost, commensurate with quality needed, and to clearly define authority for the purchasing function of the city. And what I think is a little unusual here is that we're using this to purchase courses for Parks and Rec, and I want to have this process sort of gone over, for lack of a better word, because it seems a little odd that we are looking at Parks and Recreation contracts through the city this way. I'd like to know how other cities are doing this, and, and what their, what their contract amount is and what their processes are in order to bring in different courses. And, and maybe there is, you know, down the road, a different process that we can follow, because I do think it is a little strange if we were to, say, we want to have, we want to have Math Olympiads. What even would a bid process look like in that, in that type of situation? And so I kind of think that there should be a different process by which the Director of Parks and Recreation has perhaps more control about who is selected. I think it's a little odd how this is trailing through and ends up on our accounts payable as payments to then the, the different instructors. And that's one of the things I've been seeing in the accounts payable statements, which I wonder how other cities are doing this, because our Parks and Rec courses, the instructors, they're getting paid through, through us. And maybe everyone does it the same way, but with regards to the contracting, I, I'm not sure about this process, if this is, if this is the best way it can be done.
Okay, well, at this point, I'm going to put forward a motion. I'm going to move the item under the recommended, recommended action. In addition to that, I would like to move that we convene a subcommittee to look into the bidding and contracting process. I nominate Councilmember Moore, as well as Councilmember Willie, for the subcommittee with the direction to work with staff to get more clarity into the process and to come back at a date in the future to, with us in a study session to give your recommendations and findings with regard to how this process is worked, what we can perhaps do to make this more transparent and improve the process going forward if needed. So that's my motion. Would anyone like to second?
Second, yeah, second.
Okay, great. Okay.
Okay, comment? Yeah. Okay, so actually, this item has been on council agenda every year since I've been on. And I have wondered, how come there's only this contract, not all the other contract? There are so many programs in the parks offered by Parks and Rec. So I will be curious to know what's the process. And, and then for this one, it's actually a good idea. Councilmember Willie mentioned, there are some great programs offered by our Parks and Rec department that many residents didn't know. And for this one, not only the teacher, he explained math concepts simply for fourth, fifth graders to easier to understand. He also plays simultaneous chess with twenty-three, thirty people. So if we advertise, the waitlist will be even longer. But it's just an amazing teacher, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Director Christina Alfaro had, wanted to add some, provide some input on this item.
Okay, very good. Let me go to Councilmember Way, who has her hand up. Councilmember Way, are you okay?
Oh, yes, just let Christina, you can go ahead first.
Very good. Recognizing Director Alfaro?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I did want to bring up that agendized for the twentieth is the Internal Audit Work Program, which is currently recommending to look at the procurement process as one of the work program items for internal audit for this next fiscal year. So there is some plan in play to be looking at the contract, credit cards, the whole procurement cycle as part of the internal audit process, should council approve the work program. work program when it comes before them on the 20th.
Okay. Well, thanks for that bit of information. And Councilmember Way, we'll go back to you on.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just very briefly, actually, I want to add on to Councilmember Moore's request. I think it's very good for, especially as a new council member, to learn the ins and outs of things. I know Park and Recreation's classes are really great, but it's very hard to procure classes, grab them. So I know there is assistance there because I come from education with, at Fremont Uni High School District, adult schools, that's the programming is a tough part of it. So it'd be nice for you to introduce us to it and then, you know, really make us aware of what you're offering. But I want to say, Math Olympia, Math Olympia, it is very popular in our school district, and the kids and the parents all know about it. And then the report is very detailed, and you can see we are actually making money in the report, how much we're getting. I'm not advertising we're making money, but this is a great service that we're giving to the parents and students. So I really appreciate the staff's work on it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Director Alfaro, you still have your hand up. Did you want to say something in follow-up, or was that just an artifact of?
No, I just forgot to lower my hand. Sorry.
All right. So I don't see any other hands up at this point. Councilmember Moore, your hand is back up. Did you want to make a comment?
Yes. And I'd like to also know what the policy is on us making money on our Parks and Recreation classes. And is that equitably distributed between one class versus another? The individual profit that the city would be making per student as well? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And I guess that's a pending question. Did, Director McGrini, did you want to speak to that in terms of how the proceeds from a net gain from a particular class are distributed?
Yes. So the rule of thumb really is about a 60-40 percentage for a contractor, with the contractor getting 60% of the contract, and the city in taking 40%. And then I would just want to also emphasize that this is one of our most popular classes. It fills up every single year. And the reason that we're here is because the $175,000 threshold, it is over that amount. That's why it is brought to you for your consideration. And then normally, Vice Mayor did mention that this item comes routinely, and it actually comes every two years. And for the purposes that this agreement is for three years, it's on a three-year repeating cycle. So just for that fact, to, you know, make it more consistent with the cycle that it's offered, and changing to a three-year contract instead of a two, is the reason it's before you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for those considerations. I do see, I do see a member of the public with a hand raised, but we didn't, I'm not sure if I recognized members of the public. So let me go to that member of the public and ask. So Gilbert, did you want to speak on item number 12, or did you want to speak on a different item?
Yes, I wanted to speak on this item. I was trying to attract your attention, but wasn't sure if you were.
You have three minutes to speak.
So on this item, the mayor and the C manager worked really hard on the agenda item, and they put things on the agenda for the purpose of items that are usually straightforward. As the directors pointed out, this item has been on every two to three years. The Cupertino City is known for education, as Councilmember Way said, and a lot of our children come here because of excellent programs that we offer at the city. The city programs for our education, like Olympia, as the mayor said, is a really popular program. And there's a split between the city and the vendor. Obviously, it has to be baked in, as we don't advertise our prices. But if we were to go out into the private sector and take this program, it would be at least double or more. If you were to try to attract good teachers to teach this program, it's a hit. They may give a bigger commission to the city, but this is not our goal. The goal of services to Parks and Recreation is provide good service to city residents. You had at least two or three councilmembers, including me and many others, who have sent our kids to this teacher and trying to advertise his business, and that has provided excellent service. We have always been caught that should these services be at cost, or should it be for profit? And I believe that the C staff has worked really hard to find excellent teacher for this program, as well as make sure that we have not only cost recovery, but also to make sure that we also get a part, you know, of some of the funds as well, too. I really urge the C staff for new council members to have study sessions, as was suggested, which I think is a great idea. But the reason why we have consent calendar is with items that should be straightforward, so we don't have to spend at least 100 hours, 45 minutes, when we have other big budget items that are more important, which will be heard later on in the evening. So this is why we have great city managers like Dev Feng, why we have great mayors like Darcy Paul, who served a second time, and he was trying to manage an effective meeting time. So I really urge that we pass this item, as a lot of parents have committed their money and time for this, and not wait for another month, and put this in study session. And I support the motion that has been presented. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Gilbert. I'll bring this back. Vice Mayor Chow, you do have your hand raised. And before you do that, I'll just make a brief comment. You know, again, I agree with the comments that have been made. You know, I think we could probably go a little bit less with the didacticism. In any event, I mean, you know, it's perfectly reasonable to look at a contract like this and go, hey, look, we have a threshold. It clearly exceeds the threshold. What's going on here? And when we're told it's professional services, well, I kind of go, you know, let's take a look. And so I'm glad that we're in agreement that it's a good thing to take a look at it. And I tried to fashion the motion in a way that we would be able to move forward with our commitments that we have. But I do hear the concerns from my fellow council members with regard to process and trying to make sure that, you know, it is a consistent process. It is absolutely acknowledged that this is a successful program, but that is not really the point of the concerns being raised. I think the concerns being raised are really quite legitimate because if you have this kind of ends justify this means sort of, you know, approach, then maybe not today, maybe not in the here and now, maybe not even next week or next year, there is that ability to have this unfortunate consequence because of the fact that you haven't figured out your processes in a more consistent fashion. And so I think that it's perfectly legitimate to take a look at it. And I look forward to the results of the subcommittee's work if we do go forward with the motion on the table. So Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised. Do you want to make a comment before?
Yeah, I shared my screen. Thank you, Councilmember Way, for pointing out. The staff report actually has very detailed information. The annual enrollment and the revenue and the city net revenue from this course. And then also, it compared this course per class cost with other comparable classes in the area. And then the service include, what it includes, it includes volunteer TA because good students, they stay on to become TA for the teacher. And then others, same events like the simultaneous chess event that kids are really looking out forward to every year. And here, it provides the qualification of the instructor. So I think the staff report, maybe this is a special kind of professional contract, city needs to justify hiring this particular contractor rather than going out to forbid. Maybe that's why the city staff actually do their due diligence and provided a lot of supporting data and detail about this contractor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I will note that the screen that you had up did have the professional services enumerated and specifically listed, although it did say not limited to. But it talked about lawyers, accountants, engineers, et cetera. So, you know, I'll just reiterate, I think the concerns are legitimate. Councilmember Moore, you want to close this out before we voted? I will ask for a vote after your comment here.
Absolutely. So under the City of Cupertino, purchasing policy from 2013, general services, operating or maintenance services, recurring services, I don't need to read the rest, but what I've just had described to me are recurring services. I've been told that this contract renews every three years. And that category says if it's greater than $175,000, formal competitive bidding or RFP with approval from the city manager code section, et cetera. So that, we need to look into this. And my suggestion is that there's a different format that perhaps we need to codify moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Madam City Clerk, I don't see any other hands up further. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are now on to item number 22. The subject is, and I'll indicate that we have accounts payable from items number 13 through 19, actually, 13 through 21, that go from March 8th to May 3rd of this year. And so a couple of members of the public noted that the accounts payable for item number 22, the only subsequent item, is for May 11th. However, it looks like it may be a typo because it says the year 2020. And so there were concerns from the public, why are we considering any accounts payable that is now one year old? And so I think that encapsulates the concern here. Councilmember Moore, I think you had indicated an interest in pulling this as well. Did you want to speak to this item outside of the concern that I'm addressing here?
Well, how this was discovered was I was adding the credit card payments for last year and going month by month. And what you find, what you'll see here for accounts payable is that it's every single week. And then there was a space, and I couldn't get the credit card totals. And then I was also, which was already previously mentioned, the credit card monthly bills are between $35,000 and about $95,000. And that adds up, you know, nearly to $500,000 for the year. And I was trying to find an accounting of where that money went. And then the other thing that I thought was kind of curious is that we adopt these resolutions after the fact that the bills have been paid. My understanding is this for transparency sake, to have this in front of the public so they know where the money has been distributed. So that's just the background on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I see Zach Korach from our finance department has his camera on. Zach, did you want to speak to item number 22?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zach Korach, Finance Manager. That is correct. This register, it did appear to have been missed. And this was likely due to the onset of the pandemic back in May of 2020, with the immediate transition to telework environment. Again, it appears to have been a matter or an issue of oversight. Councilmember Moore also correct, yes, this was brought to staff's attention, and that's why we're bringing it forward for council to accept accordingly. These items are, in fact, already paid. Submitting the invoices prior to payment could potentially result in operational disruptions and potentially late fees or penalties from the city's vendors. As far as the purpose of the acceptance by city council and the approval, council is accepting these for purposes of transparency, but also in accordance with, I believe it's California Government Code, Section 37202. If council were to not approve these registers, I might have to lean on our city attorney on this, but I believe the action and/or the remedy, it would be dependent on the specific instance or scenario. It could either require additional information or clarification from city staff, and it could go as far as requiring legal efforts to be put forth. These typically come to council two months in arrears. They historically generally follow the completion of the city's monthly bank reconciliation. But with that said, there really is no reason for them to not come to council at a more regular, more frequent schedule. And in the future, city staff will make sure that they are brought forward on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Any questions? Councilmember Way?
So Zach, maybe a government finance 101 would be good to, you know, I don't mind attend a study session of how you double-check your expenses. There must be a mechanism that Cupertino City or every city government does, that on finance, you double-check your expenses, you make sure that it has the invoice and that is legit. So maybe I think I would like to learn finance 101 so that we can totally understand how things are being done, if you have time.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to.
Okay, excellent. No other hands being raised. I don't see any other hands from the public. One hand is raised from the public. Peggy Griffin, welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. I want to thank Zach for answering most of the questions that you see up here. I also would like to encourage the staff and the council to insist that the statements come on a regular basis. This constipation and diarrhea kind of thing is very, it just doesn't, it's more businesslike if you just present them every month and go through them. And I would appreciate that from a public standpoint. It gives us more time to look at them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy. And we'll bring this back to council. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Okay. Zach, thank you. And I'm trying to, I wrote down 372.02. You had some code cited. Could you repeat that for me?
37202.
Okay. And that is from what in the?
California Government Code. That would be the legislative body, financial powers.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I was noticing in some other cities, we did have some what looked like later payments with one of our contractors, and it wasn't clear if that was because that particular contractor was slow in giving us their bill, or were we slow in addressing that. Going back to the May payment and the resolution, we would have had that fiscal year close out last, at the end of last June. So this was a May payment. So I would think maybe that it would have gotten flagged somehow there. It sounds like it possibly should have, but I'll, you know, have to read this government code and see what their requirements are. But it seems like the closeout policy should have flagged it. And while it was interesting to go through all of the accounts payable for the year, I don't want to do that in the future. So if that could, if there's some sort of safeguard so that I don't feel to have the compulsion to do that, I'd really appreciate it. And I'm also curious about whether, what kind of policies we have with bill payment turnaround, if we have like a 30-day requirement. I was looking at the San Francisco Controller manual for their finance and appreciating all of the policies that they had in place. So, thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Moore, for the very detailed work that you did. In 2018, I took upon myself to examine all of the accounts payable as well. I was mayor back then, and we had discovered a 14-year situation in our accounting department. And I sat down with Director Alfaro and Zach on a regular basis, going over each and every one of the accounts payable. But I agree that we do need to look at this in a systematic and ongoing fashion. So, no, it's good. We don't have any reason to think that there were untoward actions here. But it is also very important to keep doing the work that we were tasked here to do. And certainly, this is a very clear indication of that. And so I thank you for that. The recommended action is that we adopt Resolution Number 21-051, accepting accounts payable for the period ending May 11th, 2020. I will go ahead and move that action. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, seconds. And Councilmember Way, I think you had your hand raised. Thank you for raising your hand. If you want to make a comment on that, I'll yield the floor to you.
No comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. I will ask the city manager, Madam City Manager, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're on to item number 24. So let me just give you an overview of how we'll unfold this item. I'll provide essentially the report on it. I see that Chris Jensen, who will be our recommended appointment for city attorney, has turned on his has turned on his camera. Welcome. After I provide the report and summary of council's work on this, I'll yield the floor to Chris to introduce himself. If there are questions, of course, please feel free to ask your questions after that. And then I'll, members of the public, if they'd like to make any comments. And so, then we'll come back to council for a motion. I have legally required language that I have to provide at the outset of this item. And so, the item is the appointment of a city attorney and execution of an employment agreement. And here is the legal language. "In accordance with Government Code, Section 54953(c)(3), I am providing an oral summary of the recommended action. The item before the council tonight is to set salary and terms and conditions of employment for the city attorney position effective July 27, 2021. The proposed base compensation is $255,000 effective July 27, 2021, an annual contribution of $19,500 to deferred compensation in monthly installments, and an automobile allowance of $350 per month. The total annual compensation is $361,020, inclusive of fringe benefits, payroll taxes, and retirement contributions. Additional details regarding this item are set forth in the agenda and resolution associated with this item." And so that's the end of the legal requirement. Let me get to the human element of this. I want to let the public know that the Cupertino City Council conducted an exhaustive search for highly qualified candidates to serve as our in-house city attorney. And I believe, and I believe that I am joined by unanimous agreement in council, that our community will welcome this selection as a combination of legal acumen and perspective that will serve Cupertino in an exemplary fashion as we bring our internal legal structure back into place. And we are so very proud to bring forth our new city attorney as our recommendation, Chris Jensen, subject to the approval tonight. I want to give a little bit of background about Chris's journey to this point. He studied environmental sciences. He was an environmental chemistry grad from UCSB and then went on to MIT to receive his master's in atmospheric chemistry. So subsequent to that, he went to a local law school called Stanford to receive his JD. And after that, he embarked upon a career in which he made partner at a law firm in the Bay Area that does do a significant amount of public agency work. And then went to work in-house as the city, the Assistant City Attorney in Berkeley, where, you know, he had a wide breadth of experience with regard to all of the things that an in-house city attorney does perform. And so, I will say, the negotiating subcommittee of Councilmember Moore and I did check references. And I will tell you, you know, despite the impressive nature of the background here, you know, from my perspective, you cannot pay someone enough money to give the types of references that we were, you know, calling with regard to Chris Jensen. And so, we are just so very proud to be able to bring this forward. I want to make a reference to Shu Mahali. Shu Mahali and their designated attorney, Heather Minner, they did such a thorough job these past two years and we're very appreciative of that. And we will complete this transition as initially contemplated by city council, when we ensured more than two years ago that there would be 90 working days for a transition of processes and knowledge to take place when we transitioned back to an in-house city attorney. And, you know, that puts us somewhere in October. It was very responsibly contemplated and we are now at that day. So that day has arrived, I believe, and we look forward to incredibly great things for our community. And so, I will now turn this over to Chris. Welcome, Chris. Did you have any words that you wanted to share with the Cupertino community?
I'll be very brief. First, just would want to thank you, Mayor Paul and all the councilmembers here for this opportunity and the kind words you just shared. You know, I can tell from the interactions I've had with all of you, with Heather, with other people on staff, that this is a really strong team here. And I'm really looking forward to joining it and being a part of that team. And I appreciate the opportunity here in this meeting to have, be introduced to members of the community. And I do look forward to working with them and engaging with them as we move forward. So, you know, again, you know, thank you all. I look forward to working with all of you on the council and city staff and I really appreciate this opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chris. And so, as I promised, I'll take questions from council. Vice Mayor Chow, did you have a question? Your hand raised.
Yeah. When will Chris start?
The official start date will be July 27.
July 27, okay.
And again, Heather Minner and Shu Mahali are with us through sometime in October because of the 90-day working, 90-working day transition provision in the original contract issue. Heather?
Thank you. Yeah, welcome, Chris. I think we'll have another chance to welcome you later. And we are really impressed with your background and looking forward to working together. But I'd like to take this time to also thank Heather. And I think you have been really responsive, worked really hard. I know I asked a lot of questions. And I think we tried to have a contract attorney to see if it works out. But then the hours add up and then we have to be conscious of the hours. And then, and when there are detailed questions, the council need more and more detail in order to make policy decision, it makes it harder. So I think this, we decide, okay, maybe an in-house attorney is still a better way to go. And then I think Chris will have the authority to hire another assistant attorney to help him. So we will have more in-house support. But I'm sure that the city will continue to use Shu Mahali for all the expertise that you can offer us in many different areas. So maybe we will still see you in other issues. Yeah, thank you for all that you do. But we will see you, probably will have another meeting, I think, before the transition.
And I'll just remind everyone, we're reserving questions here. And if you have comments, you know, similar to, please wait until we have the motion on the table and then...
Oh, sorry.
No, no, please pontificate to your heart's light once we have that motion and we've had the opportunity here for members of the public as well. So, let's go to those members of the public with the hands raised. We have Peggy Griffin, as well as Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'd like to thank outgoing city attorney Heather Minner for all her work and support to our city. I've found her easy to talk to and clear the few times I've talked with Heather. And I want to thank you for that. Speaking to an attorney is not a very comfortable thing. And you make it less intimidating. So, thank you. And I'd also like to welcome our new city attorney, Chris Jensen. And I look forward to years of support for our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Gilbert.
I'm Gilbert Wong, representing myself. Want to give a warm welcome to our new incoming city attorney, Chris Jensen. My comment is about process and procedure. And I know our city clerk has done a wonderful job and caught one of two process questions that I had of concern. There's a new Brown Act law that was passed that we cannot put city managers and city attorneys in consent items. So I saw the city clerk has amended the item in item 21, 20, excuse me, item number 23, 24, and 25 were pulled, I mean, excuse me, 24 and 26 were pulled, but item 25 was done under consent calendar. I really urge you to correct that item and do it under a public hearing because it's required by a new law that was passed. I believe it was in either 2015 or 2016. And I know that because of experience appointing two city attorneys, one city manager, a county librarian, and a college president. But I'll let Heather, since she's still the acting city attorney, to weigh on that. My second concern is that when I pulled the item on both item 24 and 26 and I looked at the staff report, state law requires you to provide the city attorney's employment agreements. And it has to be a public item for 70 days for the public to read. And maybe I didn't see it, but could you answer that question? Is that, Madam City Attorney, is that, where is the staff report? I mean, where is the attachment of the contract for the city attorney? And where is the contract for the interim city manager?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gilbert. And I just want to correct the errors that you made in your statement. First off, we did pull item number 25. And with regard to, I think you said that we need to provide it to the public for 72 days. I think you probably meant 72 hours. But I will leave it to our city attorney to indicate the public nature of the materials that we put forth. They are available online now. And so those have been... And so, Madam City Attorney, followed by potentially Madam Public, could you speak to some of the concerns raised by the public speaker here?
Yeah, the law requires the compensations to be discussed in a regular meeting and not a special meeting. And so, we noticed these items as the time, a regular meeting at a time when we will be discussing terms of compensation and benefits for city attorney and the interim city manager. And so, we are doing that now. And the mayor gave the statement of what those compensation would be for the city attorney. And the agreements are posted with the agenda items and that was done today. And Kirsten could probably confirm that we have that up on the website and notice was likely sent out when those were posted.
So, Madam City Attorney, it's nice to say that we're within the requirements of the statute.
That's correct.
And we have disclosed the material terms of the contract. The contract is available online. So with regard to what the actual legal requirements are, reciting the first one, the accurate ones here. And so, with regard to verifying that we do have the contracts available for members of the public to view, at this point, Madam City Clerk, can you confirm that that is the case?
Yes, Mayor, the, all of the contracts are posted with the agenda meeting materials, as well as in the digital archives. And an e-notification was sent out to all city council subscribers this afternoon.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so, I will go ahead and, for the purposes of bringing this back to council, move the action to authorize the mayor to execute an employment agreement for the city attorney. I also have an additional resolution to request that we adopt 21-058, approving the city attorney employment agreement, which again, is available to members of the public now. I reiterated the terms of the contract. And so what I will say, before I take a second for this, is that it is in keeping with the negotiation authority that was provided by council to the negotiators, Councilmember Moore and I. And it is also in keeping with the market conditions of a city attorney. So, in our region. And so, I will go ahead and ask for a second for the motion that is on the table. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
I was second, but I couldn't find the agreement or the staff report.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, can you indicate where this agreement is found online?
Certainly. So if you go to the written communications where the agenda is posted. So, yes, if you back out just a little bit further to the main calendar page.
Because I checked this amended searchable packet. It's not there. And I checked this page for the particular item. The staff report points to this.
Right. If I may, sorry to interrupt you really quickly. So just to go back out to the main calendar page for the, where all of the meetings for city council are posted in this...
Oh, okay. Late term communication.
Yes. Also, in the digital archives, they're separated out individually, which is our Laserfish repository. And actually, they were emailed to the council this afternoon as well, but you may have missed that.
Yeah, I didn't have time to check. So, okay. Thank you.
Okay, and so, you know, there is the ability of, if there...
Second your motion.
Very good. Any other comments from council at this time? Councilmember Willie?
Well, if we're on to our council comments, so I'll try not to be too long, but being on the subcommittee with Mayor Paul and looking at the attorney, a contract attorney or an in-house attorney, and coming to the conclusion that it's really in the best interests of our community to have the in-house attorney approach. And so then, embarking on that as a council, you know, we, as the mayor said, the extensive research that we did, came up with Chris. And I'm so impressed with his impeccable credentials. UCSB, MIT, and then on to a law degree at Stanford. And the references, wow, very impressive. But during the interview, I found him to be so personable. I mean, we are a team. The city council, the city manager, and our city attorney, we are a team. We have some tough decisions to make. We have important information and guidance that we need to get from our city attorney. And his personal, personal way with words and stuff just really speaks to me that he is just really going to fit in so well with this team. So Chris, I really look forward to you joining the team. I think it's going to be great for this community. Heather, thank you so much. Two years, how it came and went so fast. Actually, a little over two years. And the trials and tribulations that we have to go through in these tough city decisions. It's not an easy task. I don't think the community, the public, I don't think they realize the agony that we have to go through on so many of these important city decisions. What's right, what's best for the community, what's legal, legally defensible. It takes time and it takes guidance. And so you've been our extension for the last two and a half years. Thank you very much. And I sure hope we're going to be crossing paths on future needs that we'll have. So, thank you. And with that, back to the mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Way.
I think you're on mute, Councilmember Way.
Okay, got to mute myself. Okay, that's the most famous word, right? You're muted. Okay, so Heather, I want to thank you for your advice and, you know, always so transparent and give us really good detailed explanations. And I'm sure you have a great other things to do, but we hope that sometimes we'll get to see you. And Chris, welcome to Cupertino. Our city is never dull and we have a lot of activities. So I'm sure you will give us really good legal advice and it's also friendship too. Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. Well, I don't, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, well, I want to mention, because I was on the planning commission for two years, all the great help that we got from Seth Peta, from Shu Mahali. And now here on council, getting help directly from the city attorney, Heather. It's been great, very clear. And you kept us guided well and out of trouble. On the planning commission, your firm, and also here on council, which is exactly what we want to be doing. And moving forward, I really look forward to Chris Jensen coming in and being the new city attorney and bringing the expertise. And just really excited about the environmental background that you bring here and the conscientiousness and the attention to detail. I look forward to it and I think the community is going to be served very well. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And I'll just reiterate, you know, because I was the only person that was um, on council um, and had a, a tenure on it when we first brought Shu Mahali in. You, you know, I, I think it was a really important decision that we made at that time because we needed to stabilize that department. It was something where we were able to consider um, a number of law firms uh, to come in. And we also considered the fact that you have a um, a larger ro- roster of people specializing this, different areas uh, for a law firm. And you, you know, through, you know, various uh, reasons, we did have um, you know, some upheaval in our city attorney's office. Um, I'm not gonna speak to, you know, those reasons or, you know, what were the root causes. Uh, but, but I will say, I think that we responded very well to the conditions that we were given. And we knew that it was very important to provide stability and a wide breadth of uh, of, of expertise. And so, and that's what Shu Mahali did provide for us uh, for a couple of years. At the same time, you know, we have to recognize that, you know, we're in a situation where Cupertino, over the course of its sixty-six year history, has had sixty-four years where there was an in-house city attorney, and there was a reason for that. Um, the reason for it is that it is closely held advice. It is something that we're looking to develop an internal partner uh, with connections, interconnections within our internal structure, uh, such that, you know, to not put any kind of a negative point on it, such that we're not on the clock when we're going to um, seek our in-house counsel's uh, advice. And so in effect, what's been done is we have created a written documentation of all the legal work in Cupertino that needs to be done for the course of the last two and a half years. And by the time that we have the full transition, uh, it will be the full two and a half years. And so I, I think, you know, given where we are right now, we're at an inflection point, not just uh, within our organization, but historically. Um, I, I think this bodes really well. We have the ability to take um, a very detailed roster of the work and bring it to someone um, that I believe, and I believe that uh, council unanimously agrees, is someone that is going to be able to take our in-house uh, city attorney's office and very rapidly bring it up to a point where I, I, I think, and I, I speak with, you know, six and a half years of experience on council. Uh, I, I do speak as uh, as a Harvard Law graduate who's been practicing for almost twenty years now. I, I honestly thought, you know, personally, my touchstone would be, you know, if anyone could approach my experience of fourteen years of civics here and deliver that kind of service to the city of Cupertino from a legal perspective, I would be very happy. I, I didn't, I didn't think that that would be possible, frankly. And I have no interest, you know, despite whatever aspersions people cast in, in our direction and my direction particularly. I, I have no, I have no desire uh, to make a, a, a living out of the um, the civic center. Although it is something that is, it is respectable, it is, it is honorable. But, but I also, I also thought, you know, if we could leave behind, I think we'd leave behind after being on council for eight years, um, an intact city attorney's office that's in-house and is cohesive and has a standard that is set so incredibly well. And parallel with the interests and the priorities of this uh, city, uh, I, I'd feel like I have done right, uh, as far as that uh, particular part of the task goes. So um, you know, that's, that's how I feel about where we sit right now. I thank our uh, current city attorney, Heather Minner, and Shu Mahali for her service to our, our community. And Chris, hopefully this uh, motion passes and that we can uh, move forward in lockstep. And, and yeah, I, I, I will tell the community right now, um, despite all of it, you know, and you can cast the arrows and slangs totally fine, I think that we are in such a position right now that we can look forward to uh, bright, clean skies in the future and we can achieve so much together. So um, thank you very much, uh, my fellow council members. These last few weeks, on top of the city attorney's search, has also been uh, peppered with the fact that we were looking for what will be the subject of our next two items. Um, and we did it, honestly, we did a fantastic job. So thank you to my colleagues as well. Um, if I can wrap that up and then ask our uh, city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on item number twenty-four, that would be much appreciated. I don't see any further hands raised. And so Madam City Clerk, if you please conduct that.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Very big yes.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Our next item, uh, this actually could be, um, this is a twenty-five thousand dollar contract that we could have the city manager um, execute. But um, we wanted to make a clear statement that uh, the public elects the council members and the council members have two hires. We have two hiring obligations. We hire the city attorney and we hire the city manager. And so we are bringing this to the public to authorize, uh, request uh, authorization to execute an agreement with a recruiting firm for our permanent city manager for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And um, the recruiting firm that uh, we are using for the recruitment of our permanent city manager is called William Avery and Associates. Uh, they are headed by their principal, Bill Avery, who has had a replete experience in Cupertino, placing people here. Um, and we have had good experiences working uh, with Bill Avery in the past. And so um, the reach is both regional, uh, being located in Los Gatos, but also statewide with regard to the net that is cast, uh, with very quality applicants and people that we selected. And so um, I'll go ahead and uh, open it up to any staff that would like to add uh, information there. But the um, uh, the, the contract is a typical uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for the recruitment. And we did ask for a relatively, um, a relatively fast timetable of three months with the understanding that typical recruitments do go from four to six months. And I think that if we're very, if we, if we stay assiduous about it, then we can, it'll certainly come within that projected range. Um, so uh, would anyone from staff like to add anything? Uh, a- and again, this is a situation where we have a, a, a contract that's within the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. We could have asked our city manager to enter it, but i- i- in an effort, uh, a complete transparent um, set of uh, actions with regard to our two hires, we decided to put this on the agenda. Um, Director Alfaro, you have your camera on. Uh, did you want to say anything uh, about this item?
Um, yeah, just really briefly, I know the uh, topic of where contracts are budgeted came up earlier. And so I just wanted to point out, uh, it is in the staff report. But um, we, uh, in our HR division's base budget, we do include um, the cost related to two executive recruitments annually as part of that base budget. So um, that's where the funds for the recruitment will come from.
Absolutely, and thank you for that clarifying point that we don't actually have to make an extra allocation of money at the end of this fiscal year, uh, which I think is only fifteen more days left, uh, in it. So um, I don't see members of the public with their hands raised. I mean, ultimately, the um, the, the fruition of this, of course, is gonna be the identification of a permanent city manager. Um, and um, we're, you know, as promised in our June first meeting, we're moving uh, full speed ahead deliberately, and I think uh, you know, very, very well. And so I'm gonna go ahead and move the recommended action that we authorize of the mayor to execute an agreement with a recruiting firm to conduct the city manager recruitment for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. May I have a second to that motion? Councilmember Way.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Any further discussion uh, requested from council? I don't see any hands raised. And so Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, um, and, and as it turned out, um, we're, we're just getting started with the um, securing of our, us, our permanent city attorney, starting on July twenty-seventh. Um, over the course of the last, uh, how many days has it been, Deb, since you announced? Uh, it's, it's been, I guess, twenty days. Over the course of the last two weeks and six days, we have conducted an exhaustive search as well. As we're interviewing in our final process for selecting the permanent in-house city attorney um, for an interim city manager. And I, I think you get a sense of the enthusiasm that we have for the city attorney uh, that, that's going in, in the permanent in-house position. Um, I would not be exaggerating, uh, if I said that the same holds true of our interim city uh, manager pick. Um, and uh, the interim city manager pick that we're putting forward in front of the public uh, to take a vote on uh, today is Greg Larson. Um, I will um, ask Greg Larson himself, he, who has turned on his camera and has turned on his microphone, uh, to provide a brief introduction uh, to himself before, uh, if council wishes, um, to uh, ask some questions prior to going to members of the public. Welcome, Greg. Oh, Greg, actually, you are unmuted, but we can't actually hear you, unfortunately. It, it could be a device issue, um, so there may be, uh, so this is what I recommend. Perhaps reset your device because uh, the audio is not operating as, as these things go technologically. And so what I will do is, uh, as, as Greg, you're resetting your device. And, and feel free to uh, jump in if you do happen to uh.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we're here.
Oh, nice.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for uh, inviting me to speak and introduce myself. And um, members of the council, it's great to uh, see you again. City staff, I look forward to working with you pending uh, the council's action tonight. And Deborah, it's been great to work with you over the last several years on the Santa Clara County City Managers Association. And members of the public, I look forward to the opportunity to engage with you on the many great issues and challenging issues facing the city of Cupertino. By way of brief introduction, I am an adult product of Silicon Valley. I came down to go to Stanford, um, about twenty years before Chris was there and a few years before the mayor was born, I understand. So I think that shares my, my age. But um, most of my adult career has been here in Silicon Valley, and particularly in local government. I started as an analyst with the city of San Jose. Nine years later, left having created the Department of Environmental Services and serving as deputy city manager. I left the valley for a few years to go to Scottsdale, Arizona, came back as city manager of Milpitas, then uh, went to United Way Silicon Valley as its president and CEO, and then up to the state of California as chief deputy controller to return to my home in Santa Cruz, and then to serve as Los Gatos town manager for over eight years, which is where I retired from. I've since worked with about fifty, sixty local governments throughout the state, but focused primarily here in the Bay Area, helping to set priorities, cure organizational problems and the like. I think I bring a wealth of land use and financial experience to the city of Cupertino, plus a real focus on organizational development, given my role as developer of the Santa Clara County Local Government Leadership Academy. Mayor, that's probably a longer introduction than you wanted, so I'll hold there and any, answer any questions from you, the council or public.
Well, thank you, Greg, really greatly appreciate it. Let, let me just throw out a, a question there. You know, one of the reasons that I, I was really um, intrigued by your application is that you spent a lot of time uh, with the International City and County Managers Association. Um, and, and, and the way I read into that is that you have a, a very strong sense of wanting to understand the mechanics of what it is that we do in local governance. Um, can you speak to that? And you know, was that an accurate sense on my part for your involvement in ICMA over the years?
Yes, I've had several different roles with ICMA. First, directly relevant to this appointment tonight is I served on the International Interim Acting City Manager Task Force, where we came up the guidelines and guidebook to assist future uh, assistant or acting city managers. So I served on that task force. I was also president of Cal ICMA for all the city managers of California. And one of the more challenging uh, experiences I had was giving the opening invocation to twenty-five hundred of my professional colleagues from throughout the world at the twenty-ten International Conference of City Managers. Um, I had a fever of a hundred and three at the time, so it was a bit challenging when I did that. Um, but what I do bring that you certainly captured, Mayor, is just an incredibly profound respect for the role of local government. I've worked at virtually every level of government, from Congressman Norm Mineta to state chief deputy uh, controller to many local governments. And I much prefer local government, and I think much of that is due to the structure we have. Our elected officials are with their constituents every day, hearing the needs of what the community wants. Um, the staff is right there, hearing what the elected officials say is the policy direction for the community. And the city manager's role, like the CEO of any company reporting to a board of directors, is to translate that policy direction into the day-to-day activities on the ground. And that's the work I most enjoy doing.
Great, well, thank you, Greg. And we have a hand raised from Vice Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Chow.
Only questions at this time, right?
We're, we're following the normal procedure of question.
So Greg, first question, how did you get the best picture of Cupertino City Hall in your background? I don't even know where to get that.
I just Googled images for Cupertino and looked for one that wasn't copyrighted.
Wow, this is a great uh, image. And yeah, so I, I understand that you um, this, uh, you actually mentor other interim city managers on how to help a city transition. And um, your schedule happened to open up. And, and this is just seems to be karma, that way our schedule opens up too. So I'm wondering um, what you uh, see, um, you would like to help Cupertino in the next a hundred days, I think you would say, or thirty days, um, see the transition.
Well, it's clear from reading the media, the city's website, hearing from your staff and meeting with the council, that this city has so much underway. You can't just take a hundred day pause and say, hey, let's cancel meetings for the next three, four months. There's too much happening in the city to keep it such a great city. So I think my primary job is to assist the council in their policymaking and to translate that council policy decision-making into the organization so we can deliver what the community wants as quickly and efficiently as possible. And that's what I hope to do. I have a number of things I'll, I'll do over that time in terms of meeting with the council, meeting with the staff, meeting with the public, um, to, in meeting, spending the next two weeks, meeting with Deb, to get as much of a Vulcan mind meld as possible during that, during that period. So I understand what is the work of the city that's underway. And I know I come at it from having helped other, I've placed interim city managers in other jurisdictions and assistant city managers. And so I know what the role is. But because I was working half-time to full-time with the consulting firm, I was not able to take on interim roles myself. I was finally just kind of starting to wind down my consulting work when this opportunity arose. And as I shared with the mayor and council, you know, it was the one career goal I thought I might never achieve was being an interim myself. So I would relish this opportunity to assist the council, the city organization, and the city of Cupertino.
And your first day will be tomorrow?
I'll be meeting with Deb tomorrow as um, one of her staff technically, under CalPERS, under state law. We have to comply with state law. So I'll be meeting as one of her staff and working for the next four weeks and then assuming the role pending your action of interim city manager on July fourteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I don't have further hands raised at this point. And so we'll go to the member of the public with her hand raised. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, staff, Cupertino City Council and staff. Um, I would like to thank our outgoing city manager, Deb Fong, for all her hard work and community outreach. I found your city manager updates very helpful. Your efforts and contributions to our city are much appreciated. I wish you the best wherever you go, good luck and best wishes, and most of all, thank you. Um, to our new uh, interim city manager, Greg Larson, uh, welcome. And I look forward to your stewardship while we are transitioning to a new city manager. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Um, for a moment, Lisa Warren had her hand raised, but it has now lowered. And so, uh, and it's back up. Welcome, Lisa.
Well, because you said that it was up, I had to not just disappear. So, so I, Deb, I have a question for you. When I, I emailed you quickly and said, was it something I said? When you, when you announced you were leaving and you never, that's the first time you never responded to my email. And you never, that's the first time you never responded to my email, so I'm a little worried that it was something I said. But thank you for everything. It's all been said, um, I will say it differently in another way, but thank you. And Greg, welcome, and it's exciting to hear your excitement about this opportunity, so make the best of it, please. Thank you. And thank you, council, for choosing both Chris and Greg. I'm, I couldn't speak when Chris was being introduced, but, uh, it's all very good. And you all seem like you were in great agreement on who was the right fit for our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Well, I'll bring it up to, uh, council again, and, um, can we get someone to move the item to authorize the mayor to execute an employment agreement for the interim city manager? Councilmember Moore, you haven't been raised.
Uh, so moved.
And would anyone like to second this motion? Councilmember Way, you haven't been raised.
I'll second it.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, we can open it up for further deliberation, or if there are no, um, council members who would like to deliberate on the item, I could go ahead and, uh, ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote. I still don't see any hands raised, and so I will go ahead and, uh, out calling Councilmember Willie, who has raised his hand. Councilmember Willie.
You know, I, I, I try to give the other, uh, councilman, you know, an opportunity to, to go ahead of me, but, you know, I don't want us to, to slip into the, uh, the roll call vote and, and miss an opportunity. At any rate, as the, uh, as the mayor said, you know, it's an extensive search process that we, uh, needed to embark on. And, uh, of the candidates that, uh, we looked at, uh, you know, it was very clear to me that, um, uh, Greg is the one I would prefer right off. Um, it's very important that the, he's got local roots, that he's from the area here and went to Stanford. Um, you, you know, we, we hit a home run with Deborah, you know, Montavista High School, uh, born and raised in Cupertino. To me, it really speaks well that when we have somebody from the area, they're going to, uh, understand and be able to respond in a way that the community would want. And so while that's, that's an important attribute, but also his qualifications and his experience, um, I also really like his experience at United Way. You know, it tells me that, you know, there's a heart in there looking for, you know, what's important to him. And, um, I'll leave with the last item, which I find very important. I mean, being on the city council is not an easy, uh, situation. And as Greg himself said here tonight, when he introduced himself, that he understands the role of local government and the elected officials that are here for the community. And wow, yep, uh, Greg, I, I really appreciate that. It makes being on the city council a whole lot easier because, you know, we're conveying to you what the residents are telling us, and then, you know, you translate that into, you know, getting the, uh, the work done by city staff. So I really look forward, uh, to working with you, even though it is a, uh, a, you know, a, an interim position, but, um, uh, I'll, I'll appreciate it. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, so I guess I said this last time, but I, um, sometimes things happen for a reason. Um, I think when we hired Deb, we, we took a leap of faith, but then we were pleasantly surprised that we really hired a superstar. But ever since last year, in the back of my mind, I kind of knew that Deb is meant for bigger things. She's just so well-recognized by everyone. So when Deb declared her resignation, I was sad, but I wasn't surprised. And, yeah, we were, we were, the council worked really hard last month. We had so many meetings to try and find the city manager and interim city manager, and then we, uh, someone asked that we will be hiring a, a, um, a search firm for the permanent city manager. And then things worked out for the better despite all the setbacks. So sometimes you can't really control what happens, what doesn't. And, and now we have an interim city manager that actually mentors other city managers to help us steer the ship and even help us find a permanent city manager. But one of the questions I asked was, how do we maintain the trust in staff through this transition and then staff retention? I think Greg, uh, has a lot of experience on that, so that could help us, um, and the staff to, to view this as positive thing that really we, the city will be moving, uh, to a better direction. So thank you, Deb. Um, really best wishes for you and, uh, and Greg. Um, welcome after we go to the paters solution, yeah.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And, uh, next we have Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll make a really brief, um, Deb. I would miss you, but, um, I will be seeing you. I remember we still have lunch that, uh, I bid on the auction and you, you offered to help the high school's foundation, but I really appreciate your mentor and your help in the six months that I've been council. And, um, Greg, um, how do I say this? You found the opportunity to walk the talk to be the interim city manager that you mentored, and we're lucky to have you to be the city that you walked through, through it. So, um, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. Councilmember Moore.
Uh, Deb, I can't believe this is the last night. I, a- as I said before, I've really enjoyed our one-on-ones, and I, uh, even today, um, you were, uh, helping me with, um, you know, issues and how to, how to take care of the interaction with the, the community and explaining that, and I, I really appreciate it. Uh, I know it, your, your work at NASA, when you, when you came and, and helped us with our interview process and you were bringing, you know, we were literally saying you hired hundreds of people, and you could see that you already had the process in place and, and you were there mentoring us through our hiring process, and I, and I really appreciated that. And I'm also really glad that, uh, you have worked with Greg before and, uh, that we're having probably as seamless a change as possible, and, uh, I really appreciate how, how gracious that you, that you are and that you are, you know, both connecting, and I, I just feel a lot of positivity here. And to Greg, I, I look forward to us being able to tap into all of that knowledge that you have from, from your experience, and, uh, I, I hope to, um, be able to ask you many questions in the, in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Well, I, you know, I think everything has really been said, and so I'll, I'll go ahead and, um, close this out by, you know, again, thanking Deb for your service. You know, ever since, uh, you began, um, you know, my own approach has always been, you know, bring people in, don't just give them every single chance in the world, because I have seen and experienced in my own life and career, you know, what happens when people are, are not given chances and not treated with parity? And I have always made that, uh, a top priority to make sure that, you know, when we, when we ask you that question as you're first talking to us, you know, look, you've been at NASA for decades and you don't have, you know, functionally a minute of city experience, how are you going to deal with that? You knocked that question out of the park. You know, that was the very first question we ever asked you as a city council. Um, and it was, it was very convincing, and you've had such energy and such, uh, willingness to do the outreach and such willingness to do the work. I've been very gratified by that, that we brought that into the community. You know, we worked together to write your press release, right? Uh, to get you introduced into the community. And, um, you know, ever since day one, ever since step one, I have done everything I could possibly do to make sure that you had every single opportunity, um, to, uh, to shine. And I'm, I'm just, I, I'm deeply gratified that you had that ability, from being able to outreach to the community, have the touches on every single one of the council, um, priorities, uh, their actions from a pandemic, from the library expansion to coffee talks, uh, you know, I'm, I'm deeply proud of what you've accomplished. I'm happy for you that the local business journal, you know, named you one of the most influential, uh, women of Silicon Valley recently. And, and I think that it's something that, um, you know, we don't talk about on council as, as to our commitments and what we do, uh, behind the scenes, but I know each and every one of us is just so very happy to be able to put our city and put our staff into a position to be working for a, a community that is at the, the point that we're at here in Cupertino, uh, with everything that comes with it. And so I will also say that it is also true that part of our makeup as a community, part of my personal makeup, is to make sure that people not only have the opportunities, but also are always pushing themselves to be the best that they can possibly be. And so I, I think that if you, if, if anyone honestly looks at their experiences interfacing with our community, even the ones that say, look, you know, this is such a challenging community, they will always tell you in a candid moment, we want to be in Cupertino because if you can make it here, then you know that your, your standards and your quality, um, is, i- 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 is beyond exemplary. And so I want to thank you, Deb, for, uh, taking that on for the last, uh, couple of years now. And so, um, you know, you've done a lot of things, uh, for our community that have placed us into the position that we're, we're here right now, uh, in. And so I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and transition that over to, to Greg, and I think that, you know, it was remarkably surprising to run into someone with your, uh, uh, set of characteristics, your disposition, your four decades of experience in, um, local public governance, and also the fact that, as I expressed to you when we first met, I, you know, I read your background, and you seem like a wonk, shouldn't you? You seem like someone who was just so into this. I mean, if you had 16 hours to a day and you were working eight hours in those days, I mean, with regard to the rest of them, you'd probably be thinking about how to work on processes. You'd be joining, uh, an ICMA task force. You'd be really thinking about, oh, how could I mentor this particular city manager or interim city manager or, you know, department head or, you know, employees? How could I interface with council and public more effectively? And so I think we're at such an inflection point right now. We've brought in, uh, personnel that I, I would never have dreamed that we would have had that kind of opportunity two months ago. Um, and I, I would never have dreamed, you know, in April that, um, the first half of our June would have looked like, it, it looked like. Um, a- and I would tell you, I have lost sleep over the last, uh, two weeks and six days. Um, but I think we're at a good point right now, and I thank you for being here, um, in, in order to help us literally usher in the reopening, because today is, um, that day where, um, California and Cupertino reopens. So, um, thank you very much again to my colleagues for everything that you've done. I, you know, literally, um, have had to turn around meetings, and we sometimes get, uh, sometimes get aspersions cast on us for having too many meetings, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, um, we're working in the interests of the community to try to, uh, deliver these types of decisions. And I don't think, uh, in our first 66 years of history, other than the initial point of Cupertino, a council has had, uh, the task of, of designating both a city attorney and a city manager at the same time. And I hope for, uh, the sake of the sanity of future councils, that that doesn't happen for a good long time again. But I think we're also, um, you know, at, at the end of this arduous task, uh, insofar as the city attorney and interim city manager are concerned, in such a great position. You know, Greg starts, uh, effectively tomorrow, has eight days of working, uh, overlap, uh, with our outgoing city manager, Deb. And, um, you know, we're just, we're, and we're at the beginning of a fiscal year starting in two weeks. I, I think we have, uh, done a lot of ambitious things, and we've seen them through, uh, to a fruition that will only see, uh, bigger and better dividends in the upcoming future. So thank you very much. Greg, did you want to have last word before we call a vote?
Maybe a moment afterwards to say thank you, or I'll just say it in advance, given the comments made.
Okay, let's vote, and then, um, we'll, maybe to give some comments. Um, okay, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, uh, thank you very much. And, uh, Greg, before we go on to a break and, uh, item number 27 subsequently, would you like to say a few words?
No, I just want to thank the council for the generous comments. Want to thank Deb for the time she's given me in advance, um, in her, in her final weeks. That's very generous of her, so thank you for that. As well as to the city staff, um, several have already reached out. I've gotten to know this, some of the staff over the years through my work with the Leadership Academy, as well as just being a local government mentor, and I look forward to working with the organization and the community because I'm very outwardly focused. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, so everyone, we're at 9:46 right now. Let us return, um, we've been going for, um, more than almost four hours now, so let's go ahead and, uh, break, and we'll return at 9:55. We'll see you then.